What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at the hand history from the long car eighty-eight. It was played last Sunday by our friend Jeremy. So let's see how it goes.
Wow, he's got fifty bigs, so he didn't max late reg it.
Yeah. So it's a bit big, right? But we're twenty big blind effective.
Yeah, I don't know, your bet bigs kind of start to evaporate the shorter you are. It's you can bet big, but you don't have to. I guess is how I would look at it. I mean, did he have the spade?
You're mixing fifty fifty majority big bet.
Yeah. What size did ego I missed it?
I'm kind of merging.
Uh, that looks like, I mean, that's big. That's like sixty percent. Yeah. Okay. Good old ace nine open flops a medium pair, medium top pair. Uh, I would just bet small here. He checks back. You know, I don't hate checking back. I've been doing a lot more of that lately.
Would you rather take back in lane five here or in lane nine?
Well, I kind of feel like the middle ones are going to perform a little bit better just because if he does have, he's gonna have weak aces. And if he has a weak ace and you're playing check back with a a medium ace, which is like one of his better aces, you're going to be able to capture more value, I think.
Makes sense. Like bets of pot fish a little bit more.
Okay, so it goes check, check half pot. Yeah, sure.
The barrel applies with this hand.
I definitely want to get two streets here. Clubs, clubs bricked out. I don't want to go too big though. I'm not gonna go like pot or anything. He goes pretty big. See that? I don't think that's bad at all. And I might be missing value to be quite honest.
Hey, you got him. You got a sizable pot here.
Yeah, targeting a strong jack. I mean, it was good.
I don't know if I like this one.
Uh, so what did he do? He like micro three betted or something? What did he do?
Yeah, five.
Yeah, I mean, this hand's really indifferent. It's kind of in a bad spot. Like ace, jack, I don't think you can make a mistake here with with like maybe a.
This happens, it's not great.
Yeah. So I mean, what do you want to do with it?
Call.
Call's good. I mean, call's definitely never gonna be wrong.
I don't treat that very much with this part of the deck at this stack depth.
Yeah, it's never gonna be wrong.
You don't get a better race to fold. You don't get. You don't that clumpish anything here, but pretty bad thing outside of like, are you behind with your ace, you know, or not?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, you just get regions that have a lot of equity versus you to start folding. So like, I don't know, king queens probably start becoming indifferent.
Absolutely me?
Yeah, not the suited ones. You gotta call the suited ones, obviously.
So three bets a lot, forty percent.
Yeah, it's not too bad. And how does it respond to a four bet? So I think that's a pretty interesting question.
So what was it? Under gun one.
Verse low jack, I think.
Low there, yeah. Okay. There we go. So under they're gonna want a low jack strategy twenty-five big blinds. Now more like golly here. Cause I don't think people respond well. Like you're effectively three bit bluffing when you're doing that and then yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you are. That's like, it's just, it's appropriately polarized. It's pulling from the bottom of the deck. Like the your worst days that you're V pipping from the offsuit branch, you know, it's just what it's doing. But that does leave me the question. I do have the question though, like, what are you gonna do? Versus a four bet. Cause this hand is like absolutely nuked, but you've given yourself an amazing price.
You're bluffing, right? My mind, you're bluffing. Suppose that.
Yeah, you are bluffing. That's what it is.
So I'd rather not bluff too much at this SPR, but you know, it's a thing, right? I'd rather pick a king, jack, king, queen, waste.
I think it just, uh, it feels bad turning ace, jack into a bluff because it feels like such an inherently strong hand. But fact of the matter is like, I guess EP versus EP, it's.
It's a bluff, right?
It's a bluff.
Bet to ten, bottom of the range. You look at that chart, pretty sure it's gonna say call a lot here. Um, I'm all for folding here. For me, it's an easy fold.
Uh, this isn't a PKO. This is a let go for me also, just because you're not closing the action. Um, if you were closing the action, I would definitely continue here. If this is a PKO, I would continue here.
I like over folding a little bit the bottom of the range here.
Yeah. He lets it go. Yeah, I think this is, yeah, I think that's good. Six eight, good, continue. Aces, easy game. He plays this, did he play call? Sorry, my, my screen's a little pixelated.
And then check the block.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like this. I would play this the same, but facing the bet.
What are you saying? It's so deep. Like, how was he ever gonna get all in here if you just check calls, right?
Check. Well, that's, that's kind of my question. Um, I guess it's, if you look at the nature of the board, it's extremely dry. So, you know.
So it's better maybe if you check calls.
Right. I mean, he's not, there's not a single turn card in the deck. He's really scared of. So I think it would be safe to play check call here some, just because the villain should be polarizing a lot of turns. Anything above a nine, he's probably gonna want to be polarizing.
And then the turn brings in the A. Now he raises.
Yeah, the delayed, the delayed. I do this. I do this a lot, to be honest.
Now you push.
Yeah, you just, well, okay, yeah, you have the ace of clubs, so you would just go with it. In my mind.
Okay, well played. A call. A fold. We got a three bad sometimes here or call, right? We gotta play here. Okay, so we get this king eye board, pretty good for a three bet pot. We give a little C bet. We could maybe, no, it's good this size thing.
Yeah, I like this.
Starting the back door. It's time to light up the stack. Pour some gas on your stack.
Uh, he's got a gutty too, so this would be a really good check raise hand, I think.
Yeah, but we, we.
What do you do on the floppy? Check raise flop?
No, three bets, C bet.
Three bets, C bet. Oh yeah, dude, I think you just kind of got a, when you three bet, C bet a hand like this, I think you kind of just gotta go for it at this point.
You pulled some fuel on your sack and then what's like it better? Is this, is this also who I take it is?
Give me, give me two seconds. That's really hard for me to read it from my laptop.
It says N I T R zero. No, it's my afflict.
Nitro, yeah, that's, that's, uh, mister.
Is it?
That's Mr. Affleck himself.
That's the man. Okay. All right. Alright, so I like this.
He just goes for it. Okay, that was my only question. I was wondering if we were gonna try to dis distribute the bet over two streets with like, you know, I don't know, a lopsided turn bet here. But um, I think just pushing probably makes a lot of sense with this type of hand.
Yeah. All right, fuck it aces.
Easy game. We, we raise. He calls the raise is what we're saying here. I don't mind this. Uh, there is some reasonably, some reasonable squeeze stacks behind, so. You know. So note like, uh, compared to GTO frequencies, he's actually playing pretty protective with the top of his range. He's slow playing it a lot. Which I, I kind of like doing.
So they're about small, right? Good, that's called, alright. Check, check. Hmm, the board is very tricky now.
It's multi-way, like, um, I'm gonna go pretty defensively at this point. Although the nine pairing is protected you against two pairs like Jack ten and stuff like that. Uh, it's still kind of feels dicey, man.
Yeah. Definitely.
The ten completes the straight equity, but it also gets you a call from all of his straight draws from his other.
Yeah, like the jack, the jack king, the jack queens of the world.
Right, and but, but also that you, you bet the flop, right? Or did you check it?
He bet the flop small, call, call.
Right, you bet the flop small, call, call. So they're calling with every ten.
Yeah, also with every nine.
Ace ten, well, yeah, they'll kill you with a nine, but you know, if they have, you know, king ten, they, king ten, they called. Now they have a ten, now they're gonna call again. So there, that's, that's good. It's just bad when they had the nine or they have, or they now have the king queen.
Mm hmm.
That's all.
Alright. And now we just capture?
Yeah, I, I don't think you have any other options other than just call. There's, there's as many bluff hands as there are value hands and you actually still beat some of the value hands.
Sometimes it's a jack, sometimes it's a nine, right?
Yeah, he's gonna have king queen here sometimes too, and like, I don't know. Might show up with a queen eight or something, or just jacks, for instance, just jacks.
But I think he really played well on the turn, right? Cause.
Well, some people just go broke here. Some people just torch it. Cause they're like, I have aces and there's a lot of uncompleted equity that I can get value from. Um, I like it.
Yeah, very, very strong check back here.
Damage control, recognizing when the equity has shifted.
Yeah.
Even though he was, he was already torched.
Yeah, and he could have like gutted in pre-flop and then lost everything in a proper manner, right?
Yeah, properly, right?
Cause he opened EP and then he could have just three bet, but he went with the call and he literally lost the minimum somehow.
Yeah, like, um, a very typical line here, I think a lot of people would take is like three bet the jacks, the jacks call, jacks play check. You see bet the flop and get check raised and you just lose your stack.
Yeah, yeah, with them, right? And then, yeah.
But yeah, this was, uh, this was a little more nuanced. I like it.
Yeah, very strong check back on the third. Okay.
I would have lost more money than him.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Tim, how are you?
Bet the one, hmm, just four.
Yeah, unfortunately, nothing you can really do there.
Oh my goodness. Oh, matha flex three bets and then beson four bet gems. Get out of the way. Matha flex says, okay, I was kidding.
Just a prank, bro.
And they put matha flick out.
Alright, um, okay, so he finds another flat. See, this is an arrangement. This is an interesting. Yeah, but see, yeah, this is interesting because this is not a PKO.
He does it all the time. It's in his blood.
Yeah, see, Tim's over here like, you gotta three bet it. Well.
No, no, no.
We're.
We're not doing nothing here. We're expecting one of these two to trade back for.
Yeah, we started, we started a new group. It's called Flat Gang.
Oh, it didn't happen. Okay.
That gang.
See, now it can polarize. I think that's good, right? Yeah, good board too, like he, yeah. When you don't, when you don't hit the board, it's like more likely villain hits it, right?
Yep. Uh, I would just go small here with the pair of nine.
Okay. I would bet the one, something like that. Overbet the river.
The river is pretty good. So you didn't get check raised, which really hamstrings the frequency of nine X that he has. All of the draws brick. He's gonna have like a ten here sometimes. I feel like this is good value versus a bluff catcher. Even like if he's protecting a weak nine here or a weak ace, you're just gonna get paid here a lot. I think this is really good. Yeah. Know your customer.
Yeah.
Um, I would not flat here and I will be, I will need to do some, I'm gonna need to do some rethinking if he clicks the call button here. Okay, good. Yeah, this is good. I like this.
Oh.
Yeah. Hit him with a raise, call, easy game.
Do you bet the check? No spade? Maybe I check, but I like it that small here sometimes as well.
Uh, yeah, I, I play, so I play the these type of hands, I play them check more on these textures, but I, I don't hate betting at all.
Thing I won is also good.
I always say I'm gonna check, but then I bet every time. No, I should. I just look at it and I go, but the next card is gonna be so bad.
Right.
I think if you bet here, this texture, you kind of want to go polar a little bit. That means you check a lot. And you bet a little bit bigger or multi-way, so we probably don't bet big guys often. So what? You bet like two point five there?
Uh, do you bet two point five here? Verse two opponents, man, I'm just gonna protect my, my ace, jack.
You're like betting, you're getting, you're value betting, you're ace high, you're getting called by worst ace high, one street. And then you're continuing on clubs, continuing if you hit.
And by worst ace high, you mean ace deuce, ace four and ace six?
No, I mean like ace five, ace seven.
Okay.
I don't hate it, man. Like it's, it's reasonable. It's thin. It's got like a lot of good things. I just, I guess my adjustment is I just play overly nitty multi-way. So like.
Think I like it better. I wanna check it out. We'll see if it's ever a bet.
You could take a look at it. I don't, I don't hate it. Yeah.
So we're looking for explorer empty.
Yeah, you can delete half of those avatars also.
Yeah. So it's roughly a thirty big blind hand. Where is it? More like twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah, if you could find twenty, it's difficult because you really need an asymmetrical arrangement because you are fifty effective in one and twenty effective in another. But um, I think thirty is probably a good compromise. Cause you want to filter out some of the pre-flop jamming shenanigans.
Thirty?
Yeah, I would put thirty.
So and then the positions we're dealing with the button, small, blank, big, black.
Yeah, this is a common arrangement in DTO. You should find, should be able to find this one.
S R P thirty. Button, small, blind, big, blind. Boom. And then we have a board pretty low, right? Six deuce four.
Yeah, you just need low rainbow, really. If you could find low rainbow.
So other here and texture.
Connected.
Is it connected?
Yeah, there's a straight, there's a straight, three fives there.
There we go. Six, three deuce. Good enough?
Yeah, that works, that works.
There goes check, check. What does the button range looks like? There we go. Ooh. Very interesting. A lot of betting, a lot of betting small, two big blind. I wanted two point five. It's more like two.
But it's still mostly check, right?
Uh, you bet the, the suit, you bet the most is the, of the highest card. You'd bet diamonds the most here, so ace jack of diamonds, followed by ace jack of clubs.
Does this tool show you that big? Well, that does show you the breakdown.
Look at this.
Ace jack of clubs very rarely.
Uh, yeah, but here it would be diamonds. Because.
Oh, right. So we want the three of heart, we want the blue one.
And diamonds are the one front door and back door.
Yeah, so it's fifty fifty.
Yeah, so you need to bet when you have the front door, back door and check when you have the other one, kind of what I see here. Do you agree?
No, that would, you'd be betting too often. I mean, if you're trying to get these frequencies. If you bet all the front door, if you bet all the back doors and check the one that wasn't, you'd be betting a little too much, but so what?
You want to bet offsuit eights, offsuit nines? Anything five, six or seven? Oh, so wrapped around the six, you're betting pure every six?
Yeah, wrapping around the six makes a lot of sense just because there's a lot of good turn barrels and you have like.
Five, yeah. And eight, nine, seven, five, eight, nine are the court we bet. You check with overcards, king, queen, king, jack, that kind of stuff. Who's ringing?
Oh, did you hear that?
Yep. Lower.
Let me figure out how to turn that off.
Okay, so we could bet here, it would be fine. Turn, jack. Check, check. I like a big bet here. And. Uh, we could be raising here. We could be limping. I think both options are fine. Limb, raise. We call, easy call.
Why the big bet with the jack on the turn into the two players?
Well.
I knew.
What did he do? Uh, well, I mean, you have the effect of nuts here. So like any other jack, you're basically cooling. I mean, they shouldn't have too much jack four, jack six.
Okay, that's what we're doing.
So flop.
I don't know if I want to raise necessarily into an ace.
Well, ace is never folding and you're, you limp call pre-flop, so you're just calling here a lot.
I think calling makes a lot of good sense here. And actually, you know, there's a lot of good donks on, on this eight, nine texture. Like a seven, seven pie donks, nine pie donks. Yeah, like I would donk here.
We blacked the nine, jack nine.
And then. Yeah, and you're also protecting your equity a little bit, right? Like he's, if he polarizes huge here, um, you're gonna have to fold as opposed to like a donk, a cheeky donk, you're gonna get away with murder sometimes.
So your donk smaller than his bet would be.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, yeah. And you just generate folds sometimes, which is the other benefit of it, right?
Without having to do a big bluff on the river.
Mm hmm. You're depolarizing the situation.
Hmm, look at this. On the turn.
There it is.
You're checking forty-five, betting fifty-five.
Yep, and a lot of this also, it's not just that the middle card paired. A lot of it has to do with the fact, uh, or it has to do with the big blind raising strategy versus the lip. It should be extremely polar. It's like the worst trash. And the, um, the best value. So there's not a lot of eights, nine, sevens, tens in there. So when you see these concentrated boards, you see this emerging strategy sometimes.
And he found it. For the bet. Five into eleven, which is pretty good, right?
Yep.
And then king on the river.
Give it up.
Do you?
I think so.
Um, so the king's actually particularly bad. I would say it's particularly bad because if he has hands like ace four, ace five, um, they're never folding now because they chop with all other ace X.
So we tried on the turn to tackle him a little bit and then it worked, we just give up.
Yeah, I would, I would give up here. Negative, ghost writer, take my money. Or folds your equity. I feel like I, I would be extremely nervous here. Like he, he's going all in with a, saying he's got a nine, trying to target an ace. And, um, I feel like getting people to fold aces in reality is a dangerous game. But I mean, granted, this is a little bit higher buy-in, like somebody might find some ace X laydowns here.
He has repolarized.
Yeah, this is.
Actually, what was the buy-in?
It's a fifty-five.
It's a long card, not eighty-eight.
They changed it recently.
Okay, so he fires.
This can't be bad, but I would, um, I, I'm not this brave.
What does the computer do?
I would think the computer probably gives up.
The computer puts it in forty percent of the time.
It's definitely a thing.
But you don't have to do it. It's a thing you don't have to do.
Pretty interesting. I mean, it's what your nine X wants to do. And if you're gonna do it with nine X, you have to have some other stuff in there.
Your jack nine does it, so your jack ten does it some.
Right.
Nine, your ten seven does it same reason. No, your ten seven. Who are your buffs? A few jack tens.
Are your bluff suit sensitive, sensitive here according to?
I, I was looking at that and, um,
Yeah.
It doesn't.
Diamonds.
Clearly. What is our specific? Oh, we have to have to translate it.
But why? Okay, so it doesn't want, seems to not prefer clubs. So what's bad about clubs? Clubs, you're blocking the back door that came in. So if you have a club here, you're blocking, you, you need him to have miss clubs here sometimes is what it's.
You don't want the club and you want the nine.
Yeah, if he doesn't have miss clubs here, some of the time you're just, uh, going to lose.
But the jack is, but the jack is good. Because we bluff jack four, jack three, ten, three and ten, two.
Yeah, it feels like anything wrapping around the nine is gonna be pretty good. I would even say probably preferring the lower end.
Yeah, the eight, six, the eight, five does it.
Yeah. Cause you kind of want to unblock some jack ten queens stuff.
Right, we don't have a club. Right, we don't have a club.
So yeah, this is probably good. It's probably completely fine.
We'll have a deck, don't have the clubs, so it wants to go.
Right, this is, this is good. And it doesn't work.
Yeah, I think it's a, you know, I like trying the turn, but after they try the turn, I. Thing is, this here relies on something that might not be happening whatsoever, which is some blue here. Right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's very important point, Louis. That is a very important point.
Yeah.
If you walk the scenario.
I'm not expecting anyone to fold an ace to me, so this this play relies on the machine folding some aces.
And I don't understand how it chooses its aces to fold, but I don't care.
Well, it knows where the bluffs are coming from, so if you're blocking hands.
The cards that miss.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you're barreling seeing like six, seven here, you know, six, seven, eight, nine, so if you have a.
That's the thing about these solvers, they cheat. They they know what the other range is.
Yeah.
And they're wrong if the other range is not that.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is exactly what's supposed to fall, right?
That's the one.
No.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I mean, it's effectively the same thing, like, okay, it's splitting between fours, but.
Exactly why we shouldn't do it.
Right, so this is a case of like studying the solver, understanding the solver, and executing what the solver says pretty well, but um.
Not playing solver.
Yeah, not playing the solver. This is a know-your-customer situation again, where the solver folds some of the time and the person doesn't. This is no crya.
Okay.
Hmm.
I like the, I like this.
We called about ten from twenty.
Yep, I definitely call here.
Check, check. Six, seven, two, twelve, eight, nine.
Yeah, I like, I like this a lot. I I bet this always here, and I would even size up to like four sometimes.
Would you like to say machine, a sim here?
You can look for it. Um it just makes a lot of sense. To me, though, you got two overs and open-ended backdoor flush, like you're gonna have a hard time finding more equity with a hand that benefits from folds.
Okay, so.
Uh if you, if you get jammed on, are you calling?
Well, hijack, button, big blind.
By the.
No.
Either one.
No.
I think if you're, I think if you're bet folding, you need to check this.
Yeah, I don't know how many people are check jamming forty bigs is my thing.
We're eight, we have eighteen bigs, don't we?
Oh, do you? I I was looking at the other effective stacks. We did just lose a big pot. Maybe, maybe you're right, Nikolai. Yeah, maybe, maybe you're right, Nikolai.
So the shallower, the shallower we get, the more we protect our range with our draw hands, unless it's something we wanna that call off with.
To be honest, though, if I bet here and I get jammed on, I think I might actually just call. You got two overs, an open-ended, like a diamond, I think, yeah, I'm calling this if I'm only eighteen effective and I bet.
Okay.
Oh, look at the upgrade.
Got some new fancy stuff.
Yeah, you can put the cards here.
Convenient.
Seven, six. We need a seven, six.
So rainbow. Is it connected? Not really, right?
Just put in seven, six, and it'll tell us the seven sixes it has.
Yeah, you need a seven, six.
It's got a, yeah, does it have any seven sixes?
This is what we've got here. That's it.
Okay, this is terrible for us.
Are we connected? We'll have a little bit more. We can look again at this board, I guess.
No, we need, we needed open-ended straight draw.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta find something where there's two cards connected.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could, we could, we could, if you've got a seven, eight, we could give ourselves nine, ten. That's not gonna be.
Yeah, so try nine, five, try, there's the nine, eight. You could do jack ten with nine, eight.
There you go, seven, six.
Seven, six deuce, that's good, this is great.
The exact board.
So it didn't, so this little search thing doesn't work?
Uh no, it's uh now there's stacked up.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so this is gonna give us a different answer anyway.
Yeah, this will be different. Now we're definitely betting, cause we can call a check raise.
If we were.
And the sizes?
If we were thirty effective. We would be betting. At twenty, we don't have it.
We have a lot of checks, though. On that, on our exact hand?
Yeah, it was a mixing fifty fifty, right?
It was worse than that. Go back to it.
Uh hang on, I have an idea. Seven, three deuce, no good, right? Seven, five deuce, can we work something out with that?
We can give ourselves a six, eight. Uh we don't have two overs, we have one.
You're, you're losing a little equity, but.
Yeah.
I think if you did six, eight, there, it wouldn't be the worst. Six, eight of diamonds, maybe, I don't know. You would need suited.
We just, well, we just need, uh, we need one heart.
Is diamond, we'll look at diamond here. Six, eight of diamonds. Not in range.
Not in range.
Wap, wap, wap.
But, but if you look at the range here, it's betting a lot, right? So we could guess the hand would want.
Uh can we look at the heads-up strategy? Just button versus big blind with this?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Let's look at that. I'm I am kinda curious. So if you find like fifteen or twenty big blinds.
Let's look against cutoff instead.
First the check raise, let's see, let's see how things.
Let's look at both.
No.
Well, cause the big one's gonna connect with this more often than the cutoff or the hijack will. Our range is gonna be condensed, so when we reverse hijack, I think we're gonna be betting more often.
Okay, so button, hijack, let's look at hijack. Here, boom, twenty. Hijack raise, button call. We get six, seven deuce. Seven of clubs, six of diamonds, deuce of hearts. Okay, supposed to bet a lot, but he goes out checking.
He's actually polarized, polarized, and if you're gonna polarize this hand, you're definitely calling.
And that changed everything also, because we probably weren't going polar against two opponents.
Against one, we don't really size up here. Right?
Yeah, oh, never mind. I was looking at eight, seven, which makes a little more sense. You're right, Louis, sorry. So, okay, so find your.
It could be new sizings.
Look at all the checking.
Forty-six percent, twenty-two percent.
Oh, they added some of the new fancy sizings, huh?
Sixty-nine percent. Sixty-nine, ooh, pinky.
All right, so if you re, if you bet and get jammed on, so yeah, bet small, get jammed on. Let's see how we handle a jam with eight, nine.
They're calling off, no?
I would think so, but.
It's not jamming much.
He also put forty-six percent is the thing.
Well, what do you want me to put? The size it uses the most? You wanna go small?
Oh, yeah, you can use small. Give it the, give it the most leeway.
But it's jamming even less.
Give it the uh old fifty-two then. Well, I mean, you're gonna call the fifty-two. Yeah, I don't know. You're right, it's whatever. You'd have to look at like fifteen big blinds to really get a robust jamming strategy, I think.
Look at this. How do we play this time?
Bet small. Bet like four.
Four, okay, and one going six, seven?
No.
Uh I don't think you need to. Like you got, you got, you're pretty locked up here. I would probably go small as well. What did he do? I missed it, it was.
Bet small, bet four in the twelve.
Okay. You could check raise not this, though. That's too big of a bet.
Yeah, just fold.
Take my money. Okay, so this right here, I do like the V pip from under the gun, but I think fourteen or so, I'm just jamming this.
Oh, I don't think we have a jam range of fourteen under the gun.
Yeah, we don't.
Maybe you're right. It's also, well, it is eight-handed.
Bet small, I think that's okay.
That's pretty big.
Well, it's.
Here's this, this is the exact situation. That we were just talking about. You gotta just call this off.
Yeah, happy days. We're gonna hit.
He's got ace eight and you're just gonna hit.
And a little ten sometimes is all you need.
A little ten is all you had. Nice. We still have the strange ones.
Say you face a C bet here, it's a good check raise, I think, no?
Uh yeah, you got backdoor, you get a five for a straight. You could definitely check raise that at some frequency, I think would be good.
It, we check turn two. I'm probably betting turn a lot.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, I I I could go either way, to be quite honest.
I guess we have a lot of five X and six X that bet first.
Hmm, I would think, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, ultimately, you do have ace high.
And then he just folds to a bet.
I I I call on that river incorrectly all the time.
I will, I like, I like it, how he played it. He played it like a bluff catcher and then he didn't bluff catcher. Thank you very much.
Play it like a the bluff catcher, but don't bluff catcher.
Yeah, don't bluff catch with it.
Same old. Um, call. Fold. Check.
You bet or do you check?
Check.
I pure check.
I like checking. Hello, check again, right? Check, check, check.
I am still marginal on this board. I'm I'm checking again, uh call.
Got a call one? We need, I thought, speed them.
Perfect.
Jam, yeah, this is good.
Woo. We can.
Um.
Just a call?
I like call.
I think we can three bet some.
What's the point?
I uh I I think if you're gonna three bet twenty-five effective, it's gonna come more from like your offsuit trash. I don't know if you wanna torch the equity of uh your suited ones.
From the small blind?
Mm hmm.
I'd be surprised with.
Well, yeah, look at it. I I I'm guessing, to be honest. I don't, I just know like um you might just have some jams here with some of this stuff, but I don't think you're gonna be three betting small a lot of it. I haven't looked at small, blind, twenty-five versus like E P in a while.
Can we look at, can we look at our three bet range where we're pulling from?
It's gonna be stuff that you can fold versus a four bet jam, I think.
I'm like ace ten off, king, queen off, king, jack off.
I'd rather call that stuff.
Button, hijack.
Oh, Jack.
Yeah, I'm calling every hand you just said. Ace ten off, king, queen off, I'm pure calling.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's the other way around. So all of the offsuit stuff, you wanna three bet, the suited stuff, you wanna call. And then like the suited Broadway just has enough equity, um you can just start playing pile at twenty-five. Yeah, this, this makes sense. This is what I was thinking.
A queen, eight suited, king, eight suited, ace.
And it's just because like if you three bet small, so make it three bet small and then make them pile. Like you just uh, you're just pretty much, all of your suited equity is just torched. So that's, you wanna protect that kinda stuff at this S P R, I think.
Yeah.
I think it's reasonable, like king, eight suited and queen, eight suited are three betting, so he's pulling from the right region.
So yeah, you could maybe make this into your three bets sometimes.
Makes sense, right? The two fifty.
Yeah, I I in-game, I play more calls with this region.
You jam nine, seven here.
Uh jamming nine, seven feels kind of bad. Honestly, I kinda just exploit fold here sometimes. Cause you just have to commit yourself first to small blind, which is not the worst, but do you really wanna pay the man five big blinds with nine high?
No gamble, no future, but yeah, I'm folding. I have no future.
Easy game. I like the call.
Weird donkey, I'm probably just calling.
He didn't, he didn't complete. He continued.
It's a C bet.
You see that, three better aces. I'm never.
Still calling now.
I would play call there.
Do we see that assault real quick? Are we supposed to pure call? Like I'll raise, like.
I don't think you have much raising in position here, simple as that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, Louis.
You're like calling or?
So, this board is so dry.
Like, I don't know what I would bluff raise.
Give the man a card.
Yeah, and like the times he has value, you're still getting paid by the value, like on later streets.
His bluffs have so little equity. Give the man his card.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we don't have a calling range here.
Just say we're in the cutoff then, for the button, whichever calls aces. This is fine. Ten, six, two, rainbow.
So we have a donking range.
This is a C.
You're right, no, I'm I'm dumb.
It does raise home.
Where is Benny? Benny.
We have a lot of ten X, I guess.
So if my my view of that hand is if I'm playing the the call line, which I'm just not playing, then I would, I would continue, I would continue the deception. Use your game.
So C bet, we pick up some pretty good equity on that turn with that big. He folds, I think that's pretty good.
Me too.
Hmm. I think we, I don't think we wanna go that big on that turn.
Why not?
Cause equity completes.
He does have some king jack, but uh you think he's check raising king jacks on the flop?
Um, probably not.
Think he's three betting at some frequency pre-flop?
Not jack eight.
No, not jack eight, you're right. Yeah, I don't know, it's kinda interesting. I I would think like you.
I'll run it since we sped by it real quick.
Okay, cool.
Wanna see it?
Yeah, kind of, I kinda wanna see what we're doing here on the turn.
I'm betting every speed, I thought it was, uh, for me, it's simple.
Well, uh, Nick, Nick does bring up a good point, it's quite condensed, and there is quite a bit of completed equity on the nine, but.
Like, betting, but I'm not potting, I'm going like half pot.
Yeah, I, we size up, but not.
I think you wanna go big, just because you wanna put hands like Jack ten, queen.
Yeah, look, we never got this sizing.
Oh, yeah, you don't use this, what does it do, though? So if we, it's checking, it's just checking. Just, and how, how, what effect, how effective is this? It's because of the reasons you're saying, right, like, the equity just completes, so you can't be overly disrespectful.
And it's also so much equity to just torch, like, if he jams, we have to fold.
That's, do you fold, though? Or do you, I don't know, oh, yeah, 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 I don't know. After you've put in that many big blinds, you don't have to win that frequently, it's very polar strategy.
We are betting this size, though, you know? Eighty and fifty-five. I would've gone fifty-five with this hand, but I guess I'm wrong.
Would you roll over the ace three, ace three suited Louis?
I think these suited wheels, you just won't, you want nut flushes in your checker, I guess you just wanna protect your nut flushes here, some.
I mean, say we bet eighty-three and he jams, we have to fold the nut flush draw, right?
I think you call when you're only thirty-five effective or whatever it is.
But it's, it's really like, uh, picky on the one it bets, right?
You need additional equity with it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 so the ace jack.
Yeah, so the ace three just doesn't do it at all.
So, if, if we polarize and he jams, are we calling with these suited aces?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, why are you so sure?
Click the buttons.
Uh, ace king a spade here?
No, like ace three of spades.
That's why, I guess.
I know, but like, we're, we're in a disagreement here, cause I think we're folding and Galen thinks we're calling.
All right, look at ace six, what about ace six, like, you can just pick one of those.
Do the rays, we have a sliver.
Any, any one of them, look.
They're slivers, they're slivers.
Ace deuce?
Sure, yes, it doesn't matter which one, it's just.
They're the same hand.
Yeah, it's effectively the same.
Now you get jammed on.
He doesn't really jam.
Jabs king to queen ten, jam on us.
Negative goes writer, you're folding versus that.
Everything, folding the ace king.
Ace king, bro, I'm never.
You're folding ace queen some of the time, look at this, it's just because, this is a really difficult node.
We're not folding ace queen of spades, ever.
This is a difficult node, I think, because just the, the raised jam range just doesn't make a ton of sense, so. I mean, you're up against like the nuts and. Effective nuts and sort of the nuts.
But either way, like, say he has top pair and he's jamming, like, you have, like, what? Twenty-two percent equity?
Hello, Mr. Jeremy.
Hey, we're busy. No, I'm, I'm, I'm busy too.
We were just, uh.
See, what, 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 why is this, uh, this, I had ace king, right, this one?
No, 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 you had ace four, ace three.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we were talking about this, cause we thought it was interesting, you polarized the turn here. And we were kinda talking about.
It's, it's a fun.
Well, it's just, if you polarize the turn, what do you do versus jam?
Call.
You know, I, I'm with you on that one, and it's not like that at all.
No, yeah.
Everybody agreed, when we saw it at first, everybody agreed on your bet. And Nick just thought it was a bit too big. Then we looked it up, and it turns out it's never a bet.
Yeah, I think it's, it's too good to bet call.
You call it off.
Yeah, I kinda, I think it might have been like an exploited thing, but I kinda regret it, because like, should've checked back, right? Because, uh, I, I remember this hand, like, I, I don't wanna bet call ace tree, because like. He's gonna jam like some sort of like, Jack X, stuff like queen jack, a lo- a lot of time, and I'm just like, bet, folding a lot of equity, which is very bad. So this one, this one looks pretty, pretty bad to me.
Is that this your bet?
I, I cannot bet call, bet, bet calling is pretty dumb, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, this one looks bad, so.
Well, you.
Not a good one, but I think this guy probably was just like a very. Like passive guy or something, like, I remember the head, like, maybe, but like, in theory, it's definitely bad, yeah. Definitely not good to bet for equity. So, you wanna bet, you wanna polarize, like, bet call? Like something really strong, like, like you said, like ace, ace kings, uh, spades is probably good enough, you know? But the ace trees is not, not good enough, I think. Just check back, actualize your equity. The ace and stuff, yeah.
Alright.
Cool.
Man, dangerous waters, we've got a.
I mean, if you're calling a three bet with this type of hand, you're not calling a three bet to fold this type of flop.
Yeah, hoping for the best.
It's a very good.
There we are.
Far from the best.
Now, now we're screwed.
Yeah, you are screwed now. It's probably one of the worst turns in the deck, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, really bad, try to check it down, you know?
Alright, so the heart made him behave a little bit, which is something.
Wait, did it go check, check on the turn?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably jamming him.
Yeah, if he checks, I, I think we need to turn this into a bluff. If he checks, you know?
He double checked, he went, he went check, check, so you could turn this into a bluff, he should not have like, very many great hearts here.
I, I, I think we just jam it in his face, not, not in his face, but like, just jam it.
In its, in its general direction.
Yeah, there you go, let's fucking go. Yeah, let's go.
No way.
Yeah. Because he, he's gonna have like a lot of one heart hands, you know, if he bets the river, like ace king with the king of hearts, you know, like, something like. You know, like, now I think he just has like, kings with no heart or something.
Yeah, yeah, when he goes, when he goes check, check. Check, double checks, he's just very, very capped.
Even like, he has ace jack or ace ten no hard, ace queen, and all of it has to.
All of it has to kinda give out on the river, when he checks twice, yeah.
Oh, Mary close here, no?
Um, I don't know about this one, I remember being. This is probably close. Yeah.
I'm down to muck this.
It's under the gun, you know, it's date in the tournament, I think this is maybe before the cash, I'm not sure, down to muck, yeah, I'm down to muck as well.
Good morning, guys, good afternoon.
Hey, hey, Roger, how are you?
Hello. Good man, too.
Just happy to be here.
Good, good. Says, uh, no cryos victory.
It is.
Yeah, hope so.
Nice. Nice.
Uh, clean business. Uh, yeah, like, low flops are really good for the, the C bet. This is like probably the best type of flop, you wanna C bet against a small blind, I think. You guys agree?
I, I do a lot of C betting here, just because he doesn't have a ton of three X, it's kinda flaky. What if it's like, uh, seven, seven, though, what if it's like seven, seven, five, are you still C betting high frequency? Eight, eight, five?
I think it's still fine, right, cause like, the only hands you're gonna be afraid of would be like, uh, this is like, perfect, but seven, seven. Five was, would be like slightly worse, but still, we're gonna be doing a lot of C betting, because they're gonna have a lot of like. Think of, think of yourself in a small line, right, you're gonna have like, a lot of Jack ten suited. You know, like, Jack nine suited, King seven suited, all that kinda stuff, like, a lot of that still doesn't really interact with like seven, seven, five. You know, a lot of high cards, you have like two overs, you're gonna have like two overs with a backdoor flush draw a lot of the time, so like, when you get C bet. Half pot into it, that kinda puts you in a tough spot. So this is like a totally blank board, like, this is the best board to C bet against a small blind, it never has.
That range large here, though, instead of small, cause he like, never connected with it.
I think so, I, I think I should have bet bigger, maybe you could look at the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like range betting large, I'm just.
I think we can bet bigger.
Eighty percent with everything.
I don't know, I think I'm screwing this one up, but.
I guess the way I think about it sometimes is, as like, as the pair approaches like more of their range. I feel like people are becoming more aware of that, from a population perspective, and, uh, you just get check raised, overly check raised by certain. Player types.
But that's fine, because we, we can just call, right, can we?
Well, you gotta call, yeah, you gotta call, yeah, for sure.
Like, the board is bad for them, so if they're gonna like, try and attack us on it, it's like. Kind of, they can't really do much, because we're gonna have, like, lots of, uh, good, good hands ourselves. We're gonna have all the over pairs, we're gonna have all the ace highs, you know, with the backdoor, there's another to have a backdoor, but. You know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 no, yeah, I know what you mean. It's kinda like playing, I feel like it's kinda like playing a three bet pod versus a three bet, or like, as the caller. It's just, you kinda run into equity realization on later streets sometimes, so I play these like marginal strength hands. A little bit slower, you know, I don't know if it's good or bad, but that's just kinda what I do in games sometimes.
Okay, I think, I, I mean, betting one-third cannot be bad, right?
No, 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 yeah, I, I think I like betting small, what Nick said, betting range large is kind of interesting.
Oh, interesting, I mean, there's no large betting, is this mostly small and mid, medium? Like, a lot of half pot, you know, half pot is the most common to use size.
So. The board pushes our bet size down with the exception.
With the, yeah, there's some, some large betting, some large betting, ace jack actually, with a heart, like to go big.
If it's rainbow, does it change our, our betting size?
Good question, very good question, let me see. Whoa, holy crap.
Yeah, I think it would push our frequency down a little bit.
When it's rainbow, we just go really big.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing.
We go eighty-two percent, like, most of the time.
Uh, yeah.
So this is on the right here. We bet rain.
Make it rainbow, you're gonna see some, some good stuff. Yeah, rain.
Well, it's cause he has no connectivity with this, and we will, and we'll have all the over pairs, he has no pairs.
We bet, we bet the eighty, we bet the, we bet fifty-five, but we don't bet, we don't get up to eighty-two really. On that board, and the rain.
Yeah, forty percent.
It's due to the stack depth, like, I think if we're deep, we go larger.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm on thirty, and like, I'm thirty, there's a lot of eighty-two percent betting, twenty-two percent, or twenty-three percent. Thirty, uh, thirty bigs deep. I mean, it's just. If you're twenty-five deep, you don't need to go so big, right?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, cool, and learn something.
Turn, 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 do we bet this turn?
Good question, um.
Not, I don't. Check.
Could check back and also bet, I think, depending on our blockers. Alright. It's like a value bet at this point in time, we, if you have the heart, you can check back, we don't have the heart, we should bet, you know?
Yeah, so here.
We're gonna, yeah. We're gonna get value from your flush draws when we don't have the heart, kind of. Alright.
Then you just fold, or do you?
Um.
Like, he's not gonna show too many trees, too many five, what does he have, pocket six here?
I think we fold, because like, we lose to all the flush draws, we lose to like, seven, six.
Calling when you have like the ace of heart?
I mean. Like, I, I don't know, I think like. This line is just very underbluff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could have a pair as well, you know, like, could have like a pocket sixes, kind of thing, try to value, value bet me on the river.
Yeah.
Feels, feels like very hard to put it on a bluff, like a pure float.
Like, I'm just not a, I'm a big.
Yeah, you don't call for a jumper.
Exactly.
I don't think he's ever betting ace high, though, but like, is this, I think he has like, pocket, like a pocket pair there a lot.
Yeah.
But just didn't wanna raise the pre-flop, you know? People on ACR like to do that.
You think pocket pairs, check calling the flop?
Yeah, 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 pocket fours, yeah, for sure, pocket sixes, you know, with sevens, maybe that's a boat, yeah. Maybe he has quads, I don't know. I can think of a lot of value, value hands you play that way, but very few plus. Very few, very.
Why are you raising here with ten, seven?
This is not bad.
Because this is the, because this is the bubble. I think so.
Oh.
Let's go.
This, uh, uh, never mind, yeah. Yeah, you've had like aces at least four times.
Hey, it's a, it's a living, you know, it's a living.
Sit back, smoke a joint and wait for aces?
Yeah, exactly, it's my strategy, basically. Check the river, maybe?
Okay, so you three bet. You bet. And then the.
I thought it was a limp, wasn't it a limp pot, no? Was it? Limp, limp, limp. I, I saw the limper.
Yes.
Really big, because I didn't want him to limp call. And now he, I think he's, he screws me over this hand.
Why do you bet small here?
I mean, we have, like, it's a pair of board, right, you have the ace of diamonds, like, if he has a flush, I don't wanna bet so big. So like, I, I don't want, like, if he has a diamond in his hand, let's see, he has like.
Makes sense.
Who knows what he's limping, right, queen, king, a queen of diamonds, I want him to call, so that he can hit the diamond, I can stack him.
Yeah, I like it, complete equity, that's small, yeah.
Yeah, 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 complete equity, that's small, with the diamond, now it's like kinda double pair, we just check, hope he gives up. Or whatever, he's a flush. Wow, yeah, remember this hand, what a weird guy. I mean, he, he should have just gone all in the river, the, 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 the video have ended, you know, we would have not been here. No, nothing would have, uh, come to fruition. But, yeah, he should have checked back, and he, he put me on a seven or a four, what can I say? Like, that, that, that's literally what happened. Yeah, second up flush, it probably does jam on a river, you know? And, and I would just have called, uh, pretty confidently.
Do we ever, from the, in the three-way, do we ever check this flop, and do we, and do we ever bet it smaller? Only because.
Yeah, wait, did I, did I bet the flop?
Yeah, you got the flop.
Yeah, no, normally I would check, I like, I think I check this quite often, just that this guy is such a, was such a whale, that I was like, okay, like, this guy is like. I need to get money in, like, he's not gonna be very sensitive to like, the whole balance thing, right? Like, he limp called, king nine suited, I'm like, I'm not, I'm just gonna play my hand face up, you know, like. Yeah, yeah, this guy's not, just like, if he has something, he's just gonna call, like, king, king act or something, so I just bet big as well, you know? This is an adaptation to his. Maybe I was upset, I was upset it, for.
Yeah, it's, I know, I know your customer is like what I.
Yeah, 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 exactly, we can see what it does at GTO. Probably, it's, it probably still bad to GTO anyway, a little bit. I, I love, I love the DTO, uh, tree way, by the way, so, so cool. Alright, while, while you do this, I'm gonna get some food, we back.
Oh, there's a first row, we have a king on board, thanks for the sip. King nine five. King nine seven.
Nine seven, that's good.
Okay. So what do we wanna know here?
First of all, if we ever che- if we check the ace king. Um, on the flop, how often? All the time.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
Yeah, okay. And I'm fine with the, the adaptation, and when we bet, what size do we bet any of our hands?
Big.
Three, seven, oh, no, our bet sizes.
Big, three, seven, three point seventy-five, so that's.
That's small, odd of seven, five, oh, okay, three, seven, five, we bet fifty percent. We don't bet two point five, okay. Great.
So bet bigger when you bet here, more polarize and not with this hand.
And make one other change to this board while we're waiting, let's, let's, instead of seven, nine, let's make it disconnected, there's like a king nine deuce or something, just to, just to see if that. Does it?
It's just that heuristic that we see, like, the later position you are, the closer the positions are together, the less you bet out of position.
This one, this one.
King eight deuce, yeah, king eight deuce, king eight deuce is perfect. Just see if that disconnecting the board makes any difference.
You bet less.
Even less, now you just, now you check range.
Now, if it was like under the gun, you would have maybe thirty, forty percent bets or something like that?
And the heuristic Galen was?
The closer the positions are together, the less you bet out of position, as the deeper you get. The what, the further the positions are from each other, the more you'll bet out of position, but it's still never like. The what, the further the positions are from each other, the more you'll bet out of position, but it's still never like reaches fifty percent of the range.
Right. Hey, value.
Yeah.
Max ten value.
See, like this spot right here, if you play check, he's gonna be betting so frequently on this flop. And if you check rate, you're gonna be able to get way more chips on the flop by check raising. Than you would by just betting he calls where he can kind of pot control you, would be my thought. But you know, we are sixty big blinds deep, so maybe playing it a little more protective would be. Not bad.
Yeah. You were right, very heavy check raising with the ace kings. So you, you're better off playing, playing check raiser.
And we bet flop and river? Or we bet flop, check, turn and call river?
What do you mean?
Our, our action, I didn't see, it went by so fast after it happened, I didn't see what we did on the turn and the river. We bet flop, he called on the turn. Click the button.
Check, check.
Check, check.
Okay, and then on the river, river, we bet and he called, okay. So we went bet, check, bet, okay.
Got a call, I think.
It's a bit thin of an empty fold here, is it not? But it's a four liner, right?
It's a four liner and I mean.
You got the dumb end of it.
We don't have a dumb end. We don't have the dumb end of anything. If the jack comes, oh, if the six comes, then we lose a different way.
If the six comes, you still lose to a jack.
Yeah, we got to lose more money with a six. The six is the worst card in the deck for us.
Yeah, man, those spots feel kind of bad, but you're probably supposed to be continuing. I like c betting, I like folding.
Yeah.
Treating that as a range, range bet board?
Yeah, I think so, just range betting. Uh, you probably have some big bets here.
Against a small blind.
Yeah, I still think you could probably, well, maybe you're a little more behaved.
Big bets, hmm. Let's see. Um. Yeah, probably, this hits up, right?
I would think so.
I would think so as well, but like, not, probably not as much on the flush draw.
No, not as, maybe not as much. If it was rainbow, I think it would be more lit up.
Yeah, we're checking this one like mo- most of the time, which makes a lot of sense.
You bet like when you have a diamond in your hand?
Uh, against small blind, yeah, probably a bit more, much more.
Oh, absolute diamond and then you're shooting it in, bet then.
I mean, like, I think I would just like mostly wanna check, um, like, like, like you have to think like, um, what does this hand wanna do, right? Am I gonna fold up better? So like, when I have king nine, like, when I have king of hearts, I don't really have too much better that I fold out, right?
We should base our betting strategy on the straight cards, the seven, the six, the fives.
Yeah.
Fours.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not very good against small blind though, so I'm, I'm here to see the solves. Like, uh, that's, that's one area which I need to figure it out. So you wanna bet, what, what do you say? You wanna?
Bet big with the.
Around the street cards, right? Yeah, okay.
Then, so like if a six. Three and eight, a six, five.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Never mind. I was gonna say that I think the solver is least accurate against the small blind because I think the small blinds ranges are deviate. The actual small blind ranges deviate the most from the solver small blind ranges.
I don't think.
That's, that's, I'd be, that's, that's, I, I, I stopped it because I think that's true in cash and not true and not as, I don't know if it's true in tournaments. I think it's true in cash.
In cash for sure, right? As they don't have.
You gotta call from the small blind.
And in reality, they do, right?
Okay, interesting.
Uh, so we check.
That's good.
What do we do with the king nine or?
Yeah, pure check. I mean, I don't know, I didn't know it was a pure check, but apparently I then gave. Just lucky.
Ace on the turn though, we're gonna bet that ace, are we not?
I, I, I would think so, uh, probably wanna bluff it. Like, we're gonna get into fold. Uh, some better king highs by now, right? I don't know, ooh, without betting, you don't even bet. I think I would bet, yeah.
Yeah, I thought this was a great card from position. I, I liked this bet.
I think it's, I think it's just that king nine is just good enough that we just don't need to bet it, right? That's what I was thinking, that's what I was kind of thinking, like he's gonna have like all the jack highs, queen highs that we beat, so.
Why do you bet king, queen of hearts though?
Value for value. For against his all, all his draws.
Okay.
Yeah, I get called by all the king X of diamonds, whatever.
Very ten, I see.
King nine is just like, good enough to check, you know, not good enough to bet.
Two, four, what do you do against that?
Fold.
Hold on.
Fold, this guy, man, this is a guy who limbs, limbs king nine suited, doesn't jam the flush on the river, like if he.
He raises you, it's like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember his three best stat was like zero percent or something when I checked it.
Lose passive kind of guy that starts to raise.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, like, he, he makes it so small, like he wants to suck, suck me in, like, like please call, like, okay, okay. Like, I'm out. Like, I'm glad I didn't have a better head because that would be tricky.
We're gonna junk him?
Um, maybe, maybe not.
First lamps, you probably should be raising this region a pretty good bit.
Junk it.
Maybe not.
Let's go.
There we go.
We junked him.
We did, we junked, we junked him.
Hmm.
Uh, I think this calls, maybe the five raises?
I would, I would never wanna raise covered. This much, I think this is like in the money, you know, like. Oh, now we just give up, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's no, no point taking too much risk against a guy, like, let's say we raise, he calls, we're gonna have a big loaded pot. Out of position against a loose passive, scary guy, like.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah.
What do you do up to here?
Oh, what, what do you guys think I, I should do here? I, I know I did, but what do you guys think about this one? This is a nice spot.
Uh, so this one's got a couple things that make it kind of tricky.
Spoilers, yeah.
It's tricky, if we have a jack, you block the bottom of EP's range. ICM, you wanna use these suited kings, but I'm not like, I don't, don't grasp it here. You don't get a better king to fold, it's tricky. This kind of hand, you wanna see a flop, you don't play well against a four bet.
You don't think king, queen, under the gun folds versus this kind of shenanigan?
Yeah, one of our folds, yeah, for, no, no, the, yeah, sixteen, like, like, fourteen, wait, twelve couples.
Yeah, king, jack, king, ten, three, four, bottom, same hand.
Same hand, we also fold.
Remove the, block that twelve.
Yeah.
I definitely like this, I think. I like this because you wanna VPip this and calling feels kind of bad because you got one, two. Two really good re-steal spots behind you and the big blind is just gonna uncapped Shaka's range. Like, he's gonna be able just to push you off your equity so much with like.
Yeah, like fifty percent ICM?
Uh, I think this is in the money, right? So it's like probably the ten percent left. Because ACR's payout structures are really weird, they're very, very top-heavy, so there's basically no ICM until like, like near the, near the, near the final table, basically, I think. You know, it's very dumb. It's like the early page jumps are like, oh shit.
Galen, you said.
So bad. I think this is like probably thirteen percent left.
Okay, so let's have a quick look.
Ten percent left, yeah.
What did I say, Scotty?
You said the big blind. After the, after cashing. Button uncaps his range and I didn't understand that.
What I'm saying is he reopens the action, so Shaka can now just pile. And really like deny you of your equity. When you flat, it feels kind of bad.
No, no, the Shaka opened, right?
Well, no, he was asking if, if, uh, AU mind jams.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, and that, okay, and that allowed, right, so AU mind's stack size is an easy jam for him with, with a lot of his good range. And that allows Shaka to jam over the top and you have to fold.
One second.
Uh, I think it's more like he can also complete the big blind with suited cards, which is not great for us. Let's say he has like a queen ten suited or like some queens seven suited, he's gonna have an easy call if we just flat. And then he's gonna flop, out flop this or whatever, like actualize the equity. So I think generally we don't wanna play too many flats as in the UTG one, you know? I don't think I would play any flats personally, yeah, no flats. No flats. Very little, very little jamming as well. Yeah, we don't really wanna, need to jam, you know, because like a lot of our range is just gonna be this very linear, very strong range.
Well, this is weird, I'm not sure.
I would say there's a lot of jamming.
There's, it's like.
That's, I mean. Jam almost half the time we play. Actually, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. There, there's quite a lot of jamming, but like, the aces and kings part portion wants to do the non all-in. Yeah. Yeah, so I think, you can mix, you can mix, yeah, you're right. There is a lot of jamming. Yeah.
No, actually, this is the one, because we were too short on the low jack, this is.
Oh, oh, I got scanned, I got scanned by, by Louis.
It's raising five, so I think.
Yeah, this is, there's no jamming, yeah, this is, there's no jamming.
You raised four point seven, so pretty good.
I mean, I didn't have to make it so big against a.
Okay.
Uh, fun player guy, but it's a bit of calling, but not really, just mainly you wanna play like a.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's for UTG versus UTG one, right? Like, why I felt there was no jamming, because it's like you're jamming into like so many people.
Yeah.
It's like so many. Wait, that's not, wait a minute, you're calling that UTG and UTG one, that wasn't, that was UTG one and low jack. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, fine. Yeah, but like the idea is the same, right? You wanna jam, you, you, you have jams the later you are. Because like then you have less people you're jamming into, unkept ranges, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm jamming.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's jamming his face, let's go. Oh, no, you won. Oh, no, we got snap called, oh.
Oh, you wanna jump?
Yes.
I'm him?
I mean, now this, now, now we have a stack, now, now we can start to like this bomb people on head, you know? Like, before that, we were like, just getting bullied, now we can become the, the big bully. Yeah, check, um, just a bit small, calls. Jack, so we bluff from the bottom, right? We bluff from the bottom, so I would bet my ace seven, ace eight here, ace five, but I would check my ace nine, ace ten. That, that's the way I'll play this.
Okay, the way I would play this is the jack is so good for in position that I'm just barreling range.
Yeah, that, which is, which is not the way to play GTO though. That's the problem, because you'd be way overbetting and then he can just exploit this by just like having a stronger calling range. Yeah, I mean, this is, this, uh, this, I'll share how I would wanna play it. Uh, I would, I would bet, I would bet, um, my worst aces first, then my better aces. Because I need to balance it somehow, right? I can't just bet every single, every single hand, like that would be such an easy strategy to, to dismantle. Let's take a look. Ah, would you look at that?
Yeah.
Ace five, ace five, ace five, ace seven, you bet first, uh, ace, ace six is a pair, right?
I think you're right, look at this.
Yeah, bet from the bottom, bluff from the bottom.
And then the middle, you don't really bet.
Yeah, from ace nine, ace ten, because you win a showdown more often, that's the thing. Like, when you have ace nine, you can have like some, some stupid ace five or something, I don't know. Although it doesn't do, given your list, it didn't do the seven and eight, but it did do the deuce. It did, it did, it buffed the seven, ace seven. Oh, I'm seeing it wrong. I'm, I'm off of it.
Seven, sure bluff, yeah.
Ace seven is the always bluff, ace eight. It starts to slow down, yeah, yes, it starts to slow down as you go higher.
But as you see, we bet a lot on a jack turn.
Yeah, of course, of course, of course, yeah, but just saying that like, I wanna bet, but I wanna choose my bluffs as well, buy my check backs.
Well, it makes sense, makes sense, yeah, your strategy is pretty spot on.
Thank you.
Um.
I would just give up. The passive guy bets out, you know, we give up. Of course, you know, if he keeps doing it, we'll probably have to like look him up eventually, but, uh, so, so far I think he's pretty in line.
I would limp more than raise here.
Yeah, I don't know, no, it's just ICM pressure, you know, I just, such a passive guy, I, I don't really wanna limp anything pretty much. Like, I'm just raising most of my range if I.
I don't, we're jamming queen five suited for seventeen big blinds here, ever.
I couldn't, I considered it, but I think it's a bit too much, yeah, like I don't want him to wake up or something and just destroy me.
We have no blockers.
Yeah. I think raising is pretty cool, you know, we unblock a lot of his folding range.
Easy fold here?
Easy call, let's go.
Okay, this is interesting. This is one that I'm not finding all the time.
I'm folding.
So tell me, tell me this, if it was rainbow, would it be as easy of a call?
Uh, no, but because like there's a, there's enough draws out there, plus, you know what, like, we covered this guy. Uh, also, I think like, it's not really an easy call, it's actually just like a crying call, but I kind of like just got pissed off. That like, I have the best, I have the best middle pair, like he has a lot of queen X here, right? Let's be real, that's a passive guy, you know, he's, he's like a.
That's, that's what I, that's why I ask, I feel like you're just running headfirst into a queen ten or something here a lot.
Yeah, yeah, to be, to be completely fair, like, the minute, the worst hand he has is like two diamonds, right? Which is like two old cards and a flush draw.
Exactly, so, we're still flipping in the best case scenario.
He's never gonna be jamming like this random six, like, you know, like six, seven or something, so like this one is kind of like a, out of, uh, revenge against a guy who. Out of revenge, yeah, I think he just has queen next here a lot, I don't remember what he has, I think, you know, we might.
Okay, so, uh, so take it personal, that's, that's the.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Would you rather have a ace in your hand when you make this call?
I'd rather not, sorry, I'd rather not have a diamond, I'd rather not have a diamond.
So, okay, the, the ace, you think is not that bad?
Eh, I feel like the ace is kind of inconsequential. You're opening a button range, he's jamming so many ace X, he just doesn't have a lot of.
Yeah, I think the ace is usually live, so I think it's good, you know?
Would you rather call king, jack of diamonds or this hand?
Oh, my god, that's a tricky one.
That's a tricky one.
I, I, I'll call both, I'll call both. King, jack of diamonds is kind of good though, but, but king, jack of diamonds gets, gets messed up by the ace X diamonds, if you have that.
I like king jack because we're beating almost like most of his flushes, flush draws that do this.
You got dirty blockers sometimes, though, there's, there's a couple heads you're just torched with.
Let's say king, jack of diamonds, it's like, let's say he has ace. Uh, three of diamonds, where it does absolutely destroy, absolutely crushed beyond hope.
You thought you had bad equity before, you really have bad equity now, kidding.
Here, we don't even, we don't even raise pre, just jam it pre. Here's the thing, right, like, it wants to jam pre, but like, I don't like jamming ace six. Cause ace six is not really, it's like the real aces you jam, but this one you don't really jam, I think. Like, in nine, chip PV is not even gonna be a thing, you have to look at ICM ranges. Cause ace six is not a jam, uh, in ICM, you wanna look, you wanna jam ace four, ace five? You wanna raise fold, ace deuce, ace six, obviously, is what I will now look up in the GTO. So, see, was it like ten percent left? Yeah. Sixteen, so, there you go. Yep, I mean, this is not a good call, I think. Uh, but I don't like to fold, you know, I don't like to fold, I have to go to.
It feels kind of bad, man, but I mean, I, I don't. Feels kinda bad, man, but I mean, I, I don't think it's like a torching call, I don't think it's torching, but, um.
It's like losing, slightly losing, I think. At best, let's see what he has. I hope he has like some three, four diamonds.
Dodge a lot or you need help?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe we need help against a queen. What is this? Oh, let's go. Yeah, let's go. It's okay, it's okay, we have the mi- middle pair top kicker, you know, have to defend our honor. You know, you can't win, uh, you know, you gotta get lucky sometimes as well. Yeah, but that's not the best, not the best, we can even check back the flop sometime, you know, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about checking back the flop, I mean, typically, like I simplify my strategy and I'll bet my best second pairs, but. Just so I have second pair sometimes in my bet, bet lines, but, um.
He seems to like to call it off, though.
Yeah.
Calls it off, you know?
Yeah, it's called, well, first, it depends, right? Cuz it's never jamming here, zero percent, but when we click the jam, you know?
Oh, okay.
This is what it defends itself with, but what I'm noticing here, okay, you wanna call a lot of six?
Yeah.
Having the ace in your hand is, is less desirable than having like a non-consequential. Consequential type of six, right? Seven, six here blocks nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So whereas he might be bluffing some ace six on the flop, so. It's close.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think seven, six also has, does it have back doors? Doesn't really have back doors, cuz I'll make a straight, so.
Would you rather call off with ace six or seven sixer? That was my.
I, I, I would call ace six.
You gotta have ace six, so you have the over, man.
Yeah.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna cooler that queen?
Yeah, well, look. Seven, your seven coolers the queen too.
It's calling seven, six more.
Alright, seven, six more.
That's all you need.
Then I see. Yeah, I would call ace six because it's a better six, in case.
Yeah, it's also versus equilibrium jamming range.
Well, it's versus Jerry, if that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
This is not, this is not the best, uh, this is not the best sim. Because I think.
Look, yeah. It's, it's broken, everything's equal.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not gonna give the best outputs, I think, but it's a cool one, we can run it in pile, wait, we can run it in rules, what are we doing?
Uh, yes, but I would need a better idea of the ICM condition.
It's, it's like final few tables, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Like final thirty-four, I think.
Significant enough to matter.
My, my friend, my friend was, uh, sweating me. And then he left when there was like thirty people left, or tw- twenty people left, twenty five.
He didn't get to see this part.
I think he got to see this one.
He didn't get to see this.
You're like, ah, let's fucking go, I think so. And he's like, I'm so tired, man, I need to go to sleep, I'm like, yeah, I'll win it for you. Uh, didn't, it's like if I don't, you don't see me in the score section, you know, you know I bubbled, you know I.
You know what happened.
So I couldn't, I couldn't, uh, I couldn't let that happen, you know, couldn't let him be disappointed when he woke up. So, oh, it's a pile thing, so cool. Like I got pile and then they released rules AI and I was like, what am I doing? What, what's going on? Like literally just can do like all the solves and stuff.
Oh, look at this archaic piece of technology.
It's very, it's still very good for a postal ICM, I think.
Louis make fire.
Well, what a. What an advanced thing. It's like, I don't know.
It's the future.
Yeah, it's the future, yes.
The most expensive poker stool I bought that went out of use so quickly.
Basically, uh, just for collect, collector's edition.
Yeah, collector's edition, exactly.
Collector's edition pile. I mean, just think about this, right, like we have all the multi-way solvers coming out, have you guys tried out the Prometheus?
No.
I thought it was a scam, but apparently it's not, because my coach was running salts and I was like, oh, I mean, this is not a scam. It looks very scamish, like to be fair.
That's, uh, that's Odin's thing, isn't it?
No, uh, is it? Simple pre-flop, I don't know.
I thought the people who had, uh, the people who did Odin.
Could be, yeah, probably, because it looks the same, the, the, the branding is very similar. Uh, Odin and Metius, I mean Prometheus, I'm sorry, Odin is like way before my time. It's like, uh, before I started MTT, it was a thing, apparently, then it got like destroyed by GTA Wizard. But yeah, we are redoing the. Wow, what a good computer you have. Can run sims on the spot.
Yeah.
Imagine having to do this, like for every, every, uh, student, let's say your coach, you have to like run sims for every single spot with.
Oh, it's easier than that, I had it everything pre-run before.
Oh, wow, that's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
But, but it's, so it's sort of like you're the GTA Wizard, basically.
I used to.
Yeah, yeah, you, you were the OG GTA Wizard.
Louis had a, Louis had a computer built just for running pile.
I had three, three of them.
He had three computers built just for running pile.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them got destroyed in Mexico.
Yeah, rip, sorry to hear that.
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, so it still has the, the benefit of doing like post-flop ICM, I think, which is cool. So, like, I guess it's good for like final table situations, if I'm not wrong.
Mm-hmm, no, you're right.
Probably, I can probably do, yeah, make some use of it. Not just let it sit on my computer and do nothing.
But I think, uh, HRC can do.
I tried it out already, it's very, it's very good, like, uh, post-flop, um, the beta.
Yeah, as long as you, it just, those sims take a while, you can't just run those on the spot.
It's, it's still pretty, okay, they take a while, but they're not like unreasonably long still. Like I ran a few simple ones pretty fast on pair points and like, it was just like some very. Insanely, um, skewed, uh, strategies that came out. Like you're just like check raise like a maniac and you fold a lot, like, oh, man. So, it's very different. I didn't wanna go down a whole rabbit hole, you know, so I just pretended it didn't exist. Just gonna play chip EV for it. So, what's, what's going on here? Like Louis, give me, give me the pile breakdown, like what's, what's happening?
Right now, you see this here?
Yeah, 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 it's exploiting itself, eh?
It's exploiting itself, now it's going back up because it picked.
Oh.
Wrong path.
Okay.
Was, it's basically happening, I think in, within, I don't know, a hundred seconds will have a solution that is almost perfect.
Okay, so, so let's, let me, let me ask you, so basically when I start a sim. I need to key in the race sizes, right? Like what I did, um, like what we do in rules?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like key in the race sizes, I need to put the, uh, the ranges, so thi- these ranges I can copy from GTA Wizard, right? If I needed to.
Yes.
Like a paste, copy, paste, it's very simple, uh. Yeah, then how do I? Um, node lock anything? We, like, like I have to like. Like.
Node locking is a different, uh.
Okay, okay, yeah, we can leave that for a separate.
But I can show.
Session, that's okay, you don't have to do it today, I mean, not, not this session.
Okay, so you see now, it's, I can show you right now, actually, zero point four chips, that's pretty low for accuracy.
Okay, okay.
Pretty good.
So we can stop it, ah, okay, okay.
So now it's stopped and then we can go on the browser.
Oh, nice.
Once in the browser, click on strategy plus EV, we're gonna have the strategy for the big blind on the flop.
Okay, are we gonna, so we go to check range, right? So you gave it all the best sizes, it doesn't bet anything.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, ace six. Is betting full frequency.
Yeah, full frequency.
Let's go.
So. And then he's never going all in, right? This is, this has been run also with this ICM.
Okay, okay.
It's like middle stack against middle stack.
You also, you kinda gave it a weird structure, that was a PKO structure.
Oh, did we screw it up?
Uh, no, 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 it's just, uh, they, they just love to throw shit at my sims.
Not, a PKO structure means first and second get paid the same.
You saw it for a quarter of a second, what's wrong with this structure?
Oh, yeah. But it's okay, you know.
What if you node lock it where his only race sizing is all in?
Uh, uh, I mean, that. I think we don't need that, yeah.
Maybe this guy doesn't have a check race sizing, so if you give it the opportunity to check call or check jam, it might be different.
Okay, again, so check jam, it's still calling, it doesn't.
Yeah, so, uh, so I played it pretty reasonable, because ace six likes to call as well as all the other sixes.
Yeah.
Even in ICM, you know? Because like, we have to, we have to defend our honor, like I said.
Yeah, now say we decide to.
Okay.
You go here in three.
Oh, shit.
And then you do set strategies.
Uh, yeah, note, locked note, yeah, controller, very cool.
And then.
So, ooh.
Now you're here, okay?
Yeah.
So here, you can mess with the frequencies, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
So say we say, uh, okay, the folding range.
Yeah.
Same, the calling range is gonna stay the same, so when you click here, it's locked.
Yeah, give it more jams.
Okay, I don't wanna small raise anymore. I'm gonna go all in.
Ah, okay. I, I, okay, sure.
And you go lock.
Yeah.
So once your strategy is locked, you go save and close.
Yeah.
And this is, so assume that he finds.
The, the, yeah, the way I do it in, uh, rules is I just give him a bit of like jamming, you know, just to make the sim more, more realistic. But not like all jamming, because like that's kinda.
Yeah, but you can mess with it, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, it's true, true, fair enough, fair enough.
And then you just.
So we go, oh, cool, so easy. Click one, two, three.
Yeah, and then it's gonna do one more loop.
So it's gonna solve again, it's gonna exploit itself again.
Yeah.
All right, it's like forever exploiting itself.
So boom, now we're at three chips.
That's a lot of chips.
We can go to the next hand, though, and let it run in the background.
Yeah, yeah, if it's gonna take a while.
Very quick and we're almost finished with it.
Great, great, but the ace, the ace six calls that it recommends here assumes that he finds jam bluffs with, um, six deuce offsuit. And.
Yeah, he does. Does he?
Or five.
And some real. Maybe not, maybe not.
Real stuff, but.
I don't find, I don't find those.
You don't find six deuce, you have.
Four, five, sure, but yeah, six, two, no, I'm not check jamming second pair.
Right.
Uh, I think, I mean. People, people do weird stuff, you know, sometimes, like they have, they may have like the idea of like, I have a pair. I don't wanna see a bad turn and this guy's kinda like bullying me, so I wanna take a stand.
Sure.
So I would never, like, I would either check back my middle pair, but I don't think I'll ever bet fold a middle pair, like too much. You know, like I think it's not a great strategy, if I gonna bet the flop, I'm probably gonna call it off if I have a pair. Uh, yeah, that, that, I think that's pretty, like. Pretty, uh, close to what I was playing game. Like, you wouldn't wanna bet for the pair, right? That's very.
So this is so that.
Yeah, it's good. We were back to zero point five chip, I stopped it, then we're back on the browser, you see the no luck here happened.
Oh, yeah.
So raise on, and we can look at our response, ace is become a pure call.
Wow, wow, he makes so much, holy crap.
This is if he jams nineteen percent of his range.
Yeah, okay. I mean, before that, he was jamming nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, so it's, uh, so it seems reasonable, you know, like we, we, we just have a pair of call, I mean, we go lucky, let's go. Uh, I just jammed this, we can raise call, yeah, this one for sure, uh, but I, I wanted to jam, I didn't want them to like do the whole. Like defend and then I have to play post-flop thing, oh, we're, we're on a run now, we're running hot now. Let's go, treat it, we have to use our big stack to put it. Queen deuce off, treat it, let's go.
I don't know what to think about that.
What? The queen deuce off is, uh?
It's pretty good because you're on the big line, so on the big line, you're using offsuit hands, right?
Yeah, yeah, and you wanna apply pressure with your big stack, that's the thing.
Queen two O, but yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, queen deuce, queen five, queen three, queen four, they're effectively the same hand, I think it's.
Yeah, it's absolutely fine, yeah. Because what, what do you wanna do is you wanna have a big stack and you wanna apply pressure, you wanna apply pressure. And just use like your resources to gain more resources, but this one ace queen suited, I cannot raise, call it off against raise up blind. This guy's also like a crazy guy, he plays high stakes, you know, so I, I'm not gonna like just raise tree bet and then he jams, I have to call it off, right? So I, I flat pre, then I take it post, yeah. So that's like, now I get to play in position, you know, we get the value by our hand, uh, now it's an easy jam, I think.
Yeah.
Here's his king, you know, just give it to him, yeah, he, nice. Yeah, we're in a big pot, like a hundred bigs, you have to raise. Okay, squeezy, lissy, treat it small, so we have to fold now. Uh, we apply pressure, they fall back, we have to give it up sometimes. Yep, then call. Yep, 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 okay. Uh, because this guy is like an aggro guy and I was like, I'm gonna have a polarized race size, so I'm gonna use like some like tree. Like, uh, eight deuce, seven tree off, I'm gonna make it a bit bigger, I don't want him to like jam it. But I'm also gonna mix in some strong hands, I always have an offsuit hand, right? So I wanna, I don't really wanna go post. So I'm like, okay, I'm gonna make it big, so that he's like punished even more when he has like king, queen. Offsuit or like a queen, like, you know, the, 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 the broad, broad hands, king, jack offsuit where he limb calls. So that's why I made it bigger, but you see, you'll see something cool this hand. So I bet, he goes, he goes for the check raise.
You gotta.
Put it in, put it in.
Let's go. Ooh. So sick, so crazy that he goes for it, what aggressive guy. Yeah. This one is like, I don't know what to say. Calls, bets, ah, we didn't jam it, I backed out, I backed out, I backed out on the river. I backed out on the river, I backed, no, because like I was already bluffing him, I already bluffed him so many times, right? Like, like I was already like taking a lot of pot from him, I felt he would be more.
He felt he was.
Yeah, he's gonna be like never folding a pair, never folding, like, he'll fold queen high, I guess. But I don't think he folds anything reasonable to me, because I, like the whole game flow was that like, I had been having the better of him. You know, and he was gonna take a stand, right? So I was like, okay, fine, I'll give this one up, you know, we still win against like jack ten. But he had the queen jack, so that was painful, that was painful, yeah. But it's okay, we have a hundred bigs, you know?
Yeah.
It's not the end of the world, it's not the end of the world, but it did hurt, it did hurt. Bubble Bobby treat bets, yes, so we fold. But we have.
Little bubble Bobby.
This is not the final table, right?
No, 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 it's the final, final three or final two tables, yeah. It's ACR, ACR has long structures, yeah. Okay, treat it, yeah, ace, king, he min clicks, he, okay, this one, he tanks, he tanks until his timer. Literally runs out and he min clicks.
Yeah, I'm folding.
You're folding, you're folding, are you kidding me?
Dude, I'm not folding.
Let me reply, let me, let me, uh, repeat myself, he tanks until his final, his timer runs out and then he min clicks. Does that reek of confidence and like happiness with his hand? I don't think so, I think it's the other way, I think it's just weakness and like he's just desperate, so like, it's time to go.
Okay.
It's time to go. Like, what, if you have a strong hand, why tank to the last second? What if you timeout, you know, what if you timeout?
Yeah.
Ace jack, like, like, it's, it's a risk nobody wants to take, you know? You, you disconnect at the, the last minute, you know? Like, it's, it felt very weak to me and I was like, okay, whatever, like, we have a strong hand, let's go, default.
So you put it in his face, huh?
Because we don't have a diamond, we don't have a diamond, and like, we don't really wanna call this hand, right, we have a strong hand enough, like, strong enough. Oh, the, the board can become very dicey, you know, the turn comes like an eight of diamonds, the turn comes like a, like a. Yeah, I can easily hit a pair, I can easily hit a diamond, like, he can have equity.
It's interesting, I, I call here, and I kinda like jam, I could see the merits.
I think jamming, no, I think jamming is way better than calling, because it's a paraport, like, if you watch, if you see a lot of, uh, tree bet pots, a lot of the time. Let's say it's like four, four, five, or four bet, whatever, pre, you see ace king jam a lot. Because it's strong on the flop, it's not strong on a turn when it doesn't pick up a pair. You know, it's very strong on the flop, you don't lose to anything basically on the flop, like, what do you lose to? Like, only jack X and like.
That's about it.
About it, so you wanna go in now, but if he bluffs you with like, let's say, eight, nine, eight, nine of, uh, diamonds or something, or eight, nine clubs. Turn, turn could get dicey, man, he could pick up some equity, he could pick up lots of pairs and stuff, you know?
Yeah, you do have realization issues on later streets.
Exactly.
Yeah, I like this.
Oh, dude, yeah.
I'm doing the same here.
Great.
Alright.
Especially after the previous hand.
Yeah, 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 um, I'm not calling against this guy, raise up blind. Him again, oh my god, man, let, let's get him out, get this guy out. Get him out, out of the server, five, ten, just jams it in, oh my god. So we had top pair stacked him, very nice, bet one, uh, bubble Bobby.
Um, are you ever betting swell on the king here?
No, because our hand is too strong to turn to a bluff, right, we have the ace high, we're not getting ready to fold too much, we are. Happy to check it down with the ace high as showdown, I think it's a pure check, yeah. Like, I would bet, I would bluff like my jack highs, you know, like jack eight or something, or my seven, six. Six, uh, seven, eight, you know?
I just, I bet here, uh, just for denial of equity a lot, just to get him to fold just random junk.
From the start, it's not more of a.
Call, he doesn't call the, the random junk too much on the flop, though, he has like a gut shot or something.
Well, he has to fold all his single spades on the turn.
That's true, that's true, I mean, it's fine, I think, I think, like, like, I would check it, because I think ace high. On that board when it's like king, nine, ten, it's probably still, like, like, on the flop, yeah, because you gotta. He's gonna have some floats, right, on the turn, yeah, it becomes a bit dicey on the river, because once he calls our turn bet, then we're kinda. Like, we cannot call the river with just the ace high, right?
Yeah, Tim, I'm with you here, I would limp here more than red.
No, uh, man, it's I C M, man, like, we, we, we're gonna play a strategy of mostly raising, I think. Let's see, uh, I C M ten percent, small blind, like, are we limping a lot when covering?
Uh, it's two raises are make good limbs.
That's true, 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 if, if there's a limp, if there's a hand to limp, it's probably ace five, you know, no, man, it's like always raising. Wait, no, sorry, 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 I'm looking at it wrong, oh, no, it's not, not always raising, but it raises a lot, you know, raises mostly. Ace five with pure limp, you know? And, and some of these sims I'm looking at, maybe I'm playing in this spot.
This is one Tim said, uh, he says it's final three tables.
Yeah, yeah, final three tables, yeah, ace five is a pure limp, by the way, what the hell?
Yeah, so that makes sense.
Very nice, uh, raising is the same E V, but, but, yeah, 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 no, I, I totally get it.
Are we limp jamming this?
I would, let's see, live. I think we limp call, though.
Not limp jamming, I believe.
I think we limp call, we limp call, because it's a very nice hand to go post, right?
Interesting.
It was very slow, it's very slow, I don't know why, but, yeah.
And he didn't turn his jack, he didn't, he didn't turn his jack into a bluff.
Yeah, I can't believe he didn't, but.
Because he's bubble Bobby Bobby, you know, he's not an aggressive guy.
Good.
He's like a fun guy, wants, wants to check it down, could, maybe jack high is good sometimes, I'm probably not, but it's my range. But, yeah. So, yeah, it says limp calling everything, uh, all the, all the suited aces are then calling, uh, limp jam some ace deuce off. And all the pairs. There you go. Sorry, oh, here you go, treat it, let's go. Treat that.
This one?
I didn't treat that, okay, okay.
You're suited, you're from the big line, you treat that off so tense.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Just call the whole.
I know, but I like, I, I think, yeah, 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 I know, that's, that's why I played it, I, I played it as a call, so. I think deeper, deeper, we can treat that a bit of the suited stuff, you know, like, maybe forty deep or something.
I like this, good sizing, they're called by ace I here.
Yeah, I think, I think so, whoa, there you go. Awesome. Now we're really cooking, we got ninety bigs, you know? Yeah, we don't really treat that this king deuce thing, then, it's a pretty big difference in E V as well.
I just hold it there.
I'm folding here.
Oh, I know, this, this is a bit of a punt, this is a bit of a punt, I, I think like the confidence was high, you know? Confidence is high, just like some winner, winners tilt, you know? Yeah, 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 my friend was like, what are you doing, man? Yeah, 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 this is a, this is a bit of a, yeah, no, don't do that, don't do that, guys, don't, don't call seven, six suited, just because you have ninety bigs. And, uh, under the gun raises, is it that, is it that bad? It probably is bad, right? Probably very bad.
I like this one.
Exact reason of bad is that he doesn't have enough money for you to play six, seven suited.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, like, he has like fifteen bigs or something.
Yeah, six, seven suited is not a, doesn't exist.
Uh, oh, wow, it calls, one percent, five percent, it's very bad, okay.
I don't think that's good.
That's very bad, yeah, we should mostly fold it. What's this? Well, I did some, I did some weird treat bet, I think, for, for queen, um, let's see if it's good, though, let's see, so final three tables.
You're on the big line, you're gonna pick off suit hand.
I don't know, but we have some, some suited ones, I think queen eight suited, I see there's some weird, weird tree betting. Or jamming, I'm not sure, we can take, check it out, right, uh, last final three tables. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know, guys, I'm not, is it tree, uh, it's two, a tree, I'm not sure. Either one, either one. The I C M is high.
We have a big.
Four, it's like four handed, no, fi- sorry, five handed, yeah. Five, uh, it doesn't matter. We couldn't do treats, why is it so few, it's weird.
Just find any stack where that big blind has a pile.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, they haven't added the, the one K players sims yet. So, they better.
I jack thirty, big blind, fifty plus.
Like, I, I, I hope this is not super bad, but it felt good in game, because like. Hmm, goodness, put pressure, you unblock a lot of folds, you have to ma- you, you make some better queen X fold. That's, uh, that's what I was thinking, like, queen jack folds, you know? He's gonna open queen jack, he's gonna open some weird stuff.
Yeah, so.
No, look at the suited one, look at the suited. So, so, yeah, so like ace, so, yeah, we have some suited tree bets, we have some, uh, like, seven, six suited, five, four suited, ace, four suited, you know? Uh, mostly off the tree betting, is, is, is there a big E V difference between tree betting and calling, the queen four suited? Uh, some E V difference, it's, but it's close, you see, like, raising seven is still plus E V. So maybe against the opponents, yeah, maybe against the opponents, it can be even decent, you know, it's not losing. So, kind of still okay with that, although it's, uh, not as he's all calling, maybe I'd wanna use the offsuit ones more, cause I've. I have like.
All you have to do to justify is just say, I believe he was over folding to my three bets, and then, and then we can't argue against you, you win.
Oh, seriously?
He did, so.
I didn't believe that, but okay, I'll, I'll, I'll say it.
I think you should bet this turn.
Uh, really, and what if he jams?
Huh?
What if he jams?
Why would he jam?
Why not? Because he could have like a pair and a draw or something. He could have had like a queen nine of spades and just jam it in my face, and I'll be like, bet folding the best hand.
You think people are jamming here?
Uh, yeah, look at the raise up, raise up blind guy, he was like going crazy, I guess, he's like. Quite, uh, I don't want to be hunted by the hunter rot, so I think we want to check this one, and we wanna bluff, like. Stuff that has no equity, you know, stuff like, um, this one is even worse, this one we have double gut shot. This one we had, hit a, hit a, hit a gut shot on the nine as well, so bed folding this would be like tragedy, you know? Oh.
The reason to continue, the reason to continue the bet also is just, you, you added equity, you were bluffing.
No.
Pick up more equity, that's when you can.
No, 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 we were not bluffing, we were just betting, like, we have ace high, ace high, which is good a bunch, right, it doesn't see bad, it's not really like a pure bluff. Then we picked up equity, and the thing is that we, we actually have so much equity, we don't wanna bet fold it. So if we bet, we have to bet call, it's like simple, simple as that, right? If you bet, we def- we definitely have to bet call, which I did not really wanna do, you know?
So you see here, we check around ten percent of the time on a king.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, but ace ten is one of the few hands that checks, as, uh, quite a bit, right? One of the few hands that does check quite a bit.
But this is chippy, right?
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, you know.
It's all about the suit, let's look at our combo.
Yeah, our combo, our combo is the.
For hard ten.
Spade is the one that checks the most, basically.
Yeah.
Ace of spades, we have the ace of hearts.
And a spade.
Both, 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 both of them checked a lot.
Yeah.
See, because it's like we just block all the.
Check is good.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, the, it's a simple concept, because like, it's like, we don't wanna get jammed on, right? So we wanna actualize equity, this, is getting the fold equity from betting now better than just betting? Like, we can have the best hand as well, we could have the best hand as well, you know, you can have a sixes, a six of, uh. Uh, we have the ace of spades, right?
We have the tennis base.
Yeah, we could, we can, yeah, yeah, so, the, he could have the ace of spades, possibly, he can also have like ace nine of clubs and stuff. So, like, we could still have the best hand, we don't need to bet precisely this combo, we can bet all the other combos.
That's combo, you are right.
Yeah, I think this, um, if you bet, we have to bet call, so, let's see what happens. Oh, we rivered the nuts, yes, that's cool, yeah, we could also river the nuts, you know, it's nice.
That's always good.
Yeah. Awesome. Yeah. Raise call. Uh, this one probably need to go big, right, if you, if you bet, I think I'd check this probably. Because you don't have any backdoors, and wait, no, you wanna bet the one, go back doors, maybe, not sure. Either way, it's fine, I think.
I think I'm betting it out here.
Really? So deep? Yeah, I think betting is cool, we have the backdoor to the.
Maybe with I C M, the betting goes away, though.
Yeah, 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 because we cannot just always bet under I C M, I think. But.
Fifty fifty, so.
Yeah, it's, 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 like I said, fifty fifty, right, so, it's either way. Now, now I wish I had that.
Yeah, you're some, you're not supposed to call the river.
Did I call the river?
Yeah, it was one big one.
Oh, one big blind, damn, I should have folded, I think.
You got scammed.
I got scammed, I got scammed, that's the one big, yeah, no, I have this, like, when people bet one big, I always call and I'm always not good. But like, it's like one big blind, it's like, man, if I get bluffed here once, it's like, very traumatizing. Like, oh, man. Yeah, I've crushed his use with the one that's blind, the, the queens, yeah, we can bet, we can check. So we chop it up with right up with the apostantado. Yes, because, uh.
Was there just a jam of king sexually?
Yeah, it was blind against blind, it was good.
Okay, great.
Uh, this year, what's your calling range?
Hmm.
King, queen off, for example.
King, queen suited, I know, I, I never call king, queen off here, I think it's a huge fun. Um. I think it's, it's suited, yeah, king, queen suited, um, ace nine suited, maybe ace ten suited, possibly.
What about ace ten up?
No, 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 full, full, what the hell, you're so crushed by all his. No, ace jack, ace jacko.
Okay.
Because it, like, you think about it, he has all the ace jack, oh, he has all the ace tween, oh, he has most of the ace king, oh, like, all those combos crush you, right? So, you want to have like some suited stuff to, to make it more even in equity.
Bunky, why are you jamming here?
Uh, sorry, is, because it's a pure jam, I think?
This is a good jam.
Is it?
I think, yeah, yeah, jamming because it's, uh, it has to be a.
By no table bubble?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
What else can you do, what else can you do?
What are you gonna raise fold it?
I would just all hit the parents.
What? No calling, man, it's a, a final two tables, like, in I C M, we don't have that many calls, I think. In P K O, we can call, and, uh, by the way, I ran this spot in the seventy seven final table, the one, Galen, you were watching. The one where we folded ace ten, the, I had this exact same spot, and there's actually some, some tiny bit of calling. So, so, so Louis is not too, too far up? He's not too far up, uh, there's a tiny bit of calling, and the sim, I can, yeah. I can check it later, but it's like tiny bit, the, the rest of the time is a pure jam, I played it as a tree bet in game, I treat bet in game. But it's like just jamming and then a tiny bit of calling, uh, tree betting has the worst, uh, worst E V. Tree betting is the worst E V, so I picked the worst, uh.
Out of the options?
Of, of all the options to pick the worst.
That's, that's pretty funny.
Yeah, yeah, that does, that's hilarious, yeah, so, yeah, pure jam, pure jam, that one.
Is this a F T?
No, F T would have like, wait, what, F T would have eight people, right?
Unless there was two busted at the, uh.
No, no, I don't, I don't think two busted, yeah. Uh, I think it's just they move my, move me, maybe.
Maybe, but there was five at the other table, it's kinda weird. Maybe it is the final table, maybe you didn't play a hand before somebody busted, cause Louis filtering for V P S.
Oh, yeah, no, then, then, yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, uh, final table, yeah.
Okay, so this is it.
It is final table, this is it, yeah, this is the, these are the guys. These are the boys.
So you didn't have it easy, man, you look at this tax here, yeah? Third and chip, okay, I have to fight.
It was a battle, yeah, battle to the death.
Oh, oh, my goodness, of course.
That's a lovely flop.
See, this is very interesting for me, do you see that?
Um, I, I can see that, so I see betting one, just because like.
Do you call up?
No, no, no.
Call off?
Whoa, what the fuck, man?
So see bet and fold.
One, it's even one.
Isn't that torching the equity?
Why, what equity? I mean, we have a gut shot.
The ten, man, the ten.
If he jams, if he jams, what do you think he has, like?
It's not good.
He has his crush, man.
Not good, maybe some.
Yeah, it's not great, it's not good.
I feel like his responses are gonna be very binary on a board type like this, and if he puts chips in, you're gonna be, you're gonna be behind.
Yes, and the thing is that, why we don't wanna just check is because, we could just check, you know, it's fine. Because he has, we don't have the diamond, right, we don't have the diamond, so we don't really, like, he can have like, a pick up equity easily. With his entire range, so I think I would be okay with checking or betting one, or, yeah. There you go, refill.
Okay.
He, he shoved his whole stack in, you know, on F T, probably we wanna just.
Do you push here?
Uh, yes, I think in G T O, but I didn't do it in the game, I'd be a tree, in G T O.
You could, I think these offsuit kings definitely do shove, I think you could probably just raise two, though, and it would be probably fine.
Yeah, yeah, no, this one, I think it's a shove in G T O.
I think you're right.
King eight, king eight, king nine default, but I, and you get called sometimes by queen jack suited, it's like one of those magical hands. You know, it's like a magical hand, basically, king seven off.
This seems to be a good treat, but.
Against the chip leader.
It seems to be, and I do it, but the plot thickens, the plot thickens, let's see. Ooh. Ooh, painful.
Yeah, I saw this hand, I watched your replay, I remember seeing this one.
What do you do, you gotta fold here?
You can't fold, can you? Maybe you do.
Fold, you fold.
Maybe you do.
He, he had ace king, though, of course we fold, what is guys talking about?
You never show up here with more than thirty percent equity, never.
Guys.
And.
We have risk premium, risk premium.
And then there's the risk premium, so, really, you have like nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're calling up here?
Hmm, hmm. For sure, I was raised, raising, calling it up. Cause that one, we have ace jack against, I say by me bang, right?
Is this a push?
Uh, no, no, not too much, too much.
What that do you push here?
Sorry, we don't have any pushes.
You're covered.
What about, okay, you.
You have huge risk premium.
Fifteen bigs, you don't push?
Fifteen bigs, I push, yeah, of course I push.
Okay, so what's the, what's, where's the bar is where I'm asking?
About twenty.
Around twenty?
Yeah, so twenty.
Nineteen, nineteen, you're always pushing?
Yeah, 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 at least, a lot of the lower ace six would just push, uh, depending, of course, like ace, like some of the ace five, you can play it as a. They post, but I would just push most of it, you know? It's, ace, also ace six is just like, uh, just get to push it until twenty, like regardless of I C M.
This seems to be a good raise.
Really?
Crazy.
What do you, what do you, what do you wanna happen? Why don't this call?
Well, one thing I noticed after like adding bubble effect in I C M. Is that bluffing with high card on a flush draw board, that, that behavior. Uh, expands. You know, it happens more when you're on the bubble and where you're, when you're at I C M. You're playing with fire.
Huge risk premium, man, this is, that seems like an absolute punt.
Yeah.
It doesn't see by you. I'm sorry, I talked in my mouth full.
Not saying we're gonna go and get away with it, but.
I, I hear what Louis is saying, is that this hand, I think, it, it's like too good to raise fold. It's also too, it's like we raising it, we have to call it off, that, that seems a bit much. And like, we have such a huge.
Yeah, I don't think we call it off, we're just bluffing.
But we have ace high though, in the diamond versus blind, like why we want, there's so many better hands to bluff.
Okay, I get you.
King highs, we have like queen highs, we have like eight highs.
I get you.
You know, like we can be good, so let's check call down.
Yeah. The reason why I'd wanna bluff is the ace and then the straight interaction and then everything else.
Yeah. Overcard. I mean, I'm saying, I think those are good reasons to bluff, but the fact that we have the ace also is like, you know. Swings it to the other side of like, okay, I wanna bluff this, but it's better to call.
You got more showdown.
Yeah, yeah, we have showdown, we have a lot of showdown. We wanna go to showdown. Let's go to showdown. Yeah, call.
The lying, yeah?
Of course, top card pairs, yeah, we have peace high, blind versus blind, let's go showdown. Now we hit the ace, beautiful, see, we had the best hand all the way. We didn't, we didn't need to bluff, he needed to bluff. We kept, also we kept his bluffing, yeah, we kept him bluffing, so we got more money.
What are you doing if he triples off huge?
Uh, the river I called, I mean, we have the ace, right?
Yeah.
Like when he has, when we, I mean, if he has seven X, whatever, you know, it's a cooler, but we hit the ace, so we get the call. And it's like, kinda like a cool bluffing card, you know, it's like a ace is scary.
What would you do here with the king, queen of clubs?
Uh, probably call off, not too sure, uh, yeah, probably call off. Uh, this is good enough, you know, because he's jamming all the pairs, jamming all the. Jamming like stuff that may not dominate us, like king, queen of clubs feels like a call off, I don't know, maybe I'm too loose here. But I, I would call it for ten, for like nine point something more. You know, ten jack, easy fold.
So push here, fearless push.
We have pocket eights, it's not fearless. It's like, if we, if let's say the guy wasn't in there, we would just, we would still just wanna get my, our money in as soon as possible, right? Virus is buying with eight, like it's a nuts, basically.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, so this fearless push, for sure. I, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh shit, we win, we win the flip of destiny.
Three bet?
Uh, yeah, 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 true, but, uh, because if we lose that one, we're, we're kinda like, like, that was the flip to win the tournament.
Yeah, so now the dynamic has changed substantially, like you can three bet, kinda like a crazy person.
Like the eight real quick?
What hand?
Let's look at the eight, let's look at the eight.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you something, so why do you jam here instead of going to like seven or eight?
Hmm, because I think the low, the mid, medium pocket pairs does benefit a lot from.
But like, say squeezy jams and then hunter jams, like.
I mean, the thing is that.
So I, I, I go to like. I go to like nine or ten here, and then if squeezy jams and hunter jams, I just get the fold, but if you run into like. Queens and ace king and pocket with this, you're just. And if you jam, you're just always.
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point, like you can play it that way, for sure. Like, I like that strategy a lot, actually, like, just make it like nine, the effective all in. So, that's a, that's a very, that's a very good, very good, uh, strat, I think. Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. But, uh, let's see, is he, makes it nine, like he's gonna have to, he's gonna actualize a little bit with some like king, queen suited. King, like, you know, like sometimes, if like, ju- queen jack suited, I guess, maybe. So there's a little bit of risk, but like, I think, um, you know, in principle, what you're saying is very valid. Like, I see a lot of high six players doing that a bunch, so, yeah, definitely, definitely possible. To do the, the effective all in, yeah.
Yeah, I, I do that a lot on front tables, I, I very rarely go all in.
Yeah, I should have done that for the ace ten, a final head.
So you check back here, why do you check back?
Oh, um, let's see. Why, why do we check back? Because we have a huge risk premium against this guy, we are chip leader versus the second in chips. Uh, so hence we need a much better hand to value that, right, risk premium, that's how it works.
I think you, you cover him, you cover him though, you don't think.
No, no, no. Sorry, go ahead.
This isn't a balance thing, is it? You're not, are you just balancing, or are you just playing check back with this region all the time?
I am playing check back with this region all the time, I'm not, I'm not concerned about balancing at all, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't want money to go in. Too much money to go in, so I need to park control because of the risk premium, like this guy and me are the, like A C R payouts are so hub heavy. That like, we're playing for first, right? We don't want to, like, get half our stacks in with marginal hands, and like, it's not like, my hand needs protection at all. My hand needs zero protection, it's like either head or it's where he's, he's, he has maybe, like, he has three five or something. Or he has like a worse days, so I, I'm not gonna get three streets of value anyway, so why would I not? Yeah, 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 so definitely, I just wanna slow play one of the streets, like.
Yeah, 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 so I mean, sometimes you're taking bet, check, bet lines here, sometimes you're taking check, bet, bet lines.
Yeah, so the, the benefit of bet, chat, back, bet, check, bet, sorry. Is that you get protection, right, from, from getting sucked out on the turn, but our hand doesn't need protection. It wants to see the turn, and then, then we can decide, maybe we hit a ten, you know, we can even go for two streets, two big streets. So a lot of reasons is just like slow play here, I think this is like a mandatory slow play, yeah, no.
Are you, sorry, are you range checking then?
Uh.
Maybe a ace king, are you checking?
Let me think, um, probably ace king we won't, because the thing is that if we have ace king, then we want money to go in. A bit more than, uh, than, than.
Right, cuz he can continues with ace queen, ace jack, where.
But, but the thing is that if he has a lot of tree X in his range, I think I would still range, I'll still check my ace king, so I would almost be range checking here. You're right, like, I think the, the, the fact that there's the two trees there, he has all the tree X, we don't. It's like ace eight eight, right, uh, like ace eight eight on a normal, not a final table, like a lot of our ace X just checks. Like our range just likes to check, because he has all the eights, we don't, right? So we just wanna check, even though we have a value hand, we get the value in later streets. Yeah, so I would be range checking, I would be range checking. Good, 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 good question, for sure. And now we get the bet for value.
Yeah, he's gonna pay you with hands like eight, sometimes, king ten, king nine.
All the hard draws, queen jack, you know, check ten.
Do you value that this river?
No.
You sure?
Oh, wait, wait, you know, we do, we do, we do. I think we do. No, 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 not, 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 I think about it, we do, because like he's gonna have king X, right? Sorry, cuz he picked up some kings on the turn, and those hands will definitely call once. And then the, the, the board is just so safe now, he didn't never has three X, he never has a beat, so we have to value that. Just go like half pot or slightly bigger, five point six.
And fold to any, anything further?
Yeah, yeah, fold to a.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Oh, uh, six point four, a, a bit too big, but for my liking.
Okay.
A little too big for my liking, cuz I want him to pay me for king, I don't want him to pay me to chop with an ace, right, so. I think a little bit too big, for sure. Maybe five is good, five point six.
What about this one?
Raise the tree, and then if he jams, we call it off.
Galen, when you were talking about the, uh, bet, check, bet and, uh, check, bet, bet lines, what, what do? What about bet, bet, check, which is what I used to do and now seems to be very out of style and I don't know why?
Bet, bet, check is dangerous, because you have a lot of missed draws and capped. Range on the river, and you've built the pot, and you're handing the guy like. Like, were we in position or were we out of position? We were in position.
In position, yeah, in position.
So I mean, I guess it could be okay, you just have to deal with like some crazy donking behavior sometimes on these bet, bet, check lines.
What do you guys like to play here? I think I'm calling.
Uh, I, I definitely will, I prefer to raise this one, because it's three handed, right? We don't wanna call, and then the big blind calls, and then we just have a junk hand that does nothing. But if we raise now, he's gonna jam ace five suited, he's gonna jam pocket fives, pocket sixes, sometimes, you know, like, not all the time. But like, sometimes, you can look at this in the, I think looking at this one, the wizard is pretty important. Just to see like, because three handed.
You should be able to find this pretty easily.
Yeah, pretty easy. This is a quick solve.
Is it three handed?
Yeah, I C M final table. Uh, let's go final table, yeah? Oh, now you have a thousand players, awesome. Three handed, just find the stack distribution, which is similar to ours.
So like twenty forty sixty would probably do it, I think there's a twenty forty sixty.
Well, Galen knows, he knows all the sims. What a beast. Yeah, it's like a very, they, they have all the distributions, it's like three handed, right?
It's easy to find them three handed, some of like the, uh, more full ring stuff is harder to nail down.
Four, four, five handed, sometimes it's a little tricky, but three handed, they have everything. And it's like very, pretty accurate, I think.
That's it.
That's, yeah, that's it.
Twenty, twenty forty sixty, yeah? Perfect. So what, what, what do we do? Against, uh, so he's opening twenty nine percent, yeah? He's folding up the pocket, yeah? No, it does call, does call, wow. Of all the hands that, uh, it three bets, it does call the sevens quite a bit.
I was thinking like, okay, so the risk premium has dropped a little bit now that you're three handed. And you have all the chips, so I think you can like afford to just start getting in the pots more often.
Yeah, 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 I did, I didn't think we'd play too many calls, but I guess it likes to call because. You know, he's gonna have some call space, shack, and jack suited, can clean suited, he needs to balance it out with some pairs as well. Cuz we need board coverage, right? If we don't call this one, we have no board coverage at all on the low boards. So it mixes in, so like raising is gonna be very good, but it mixes in like the calls with like some seven, six, some six, fives, and five fours, and seven, six, five. Just to have the board coverage, because we're tripping all the king seven, all the king six suited. Right, so we don't, yeah, if not, it's this guy, it's a kind of G T O thing. But, like, like I said, in general, we wanna play our hands strong.
What's it in? Easy call?
Yeah, easy call, let's go. The ace four, there we go, does he jam it in the, in the sim? I, I think so.
Uh, versus chip leader, you think? I think he might fold versus chip leader.
Wait, uh, does he have forty? He has forty?
No, he has twenty, the, the sim was.
Yeah, this sim is wrong, yeah, so I, I think we, we fucked, we messed it up. That's, maybe that's why it calls, I'm sorry, it's a button twenty, yeah, small blind sixty, so sort by small blind, oh, yeah, okay, so. I think the, um, fifteen, fifty five, thirty five might be better. Yeah.
No, no, is it not five?
Twenty six.
No, no, cuz the small, the dealer in this one has forty, which is totally off. The dealer share twenty, so, um, let's see which one, the, uh. There's, uh.
Most important is the button has, the button has twenty five, twenty five.
That's a, that's.
And we have in cover, go twenty five seventy.
Yeah, two, no, twenty hundred thirties is the best.
That'll work.
It's the, yeah, the big blind is covering the button, yeah. That's the closest I can find, so let's see our strategy again, so that we don't miss lead, see, now it's a pure raise. That's a pure raise. Yeah, cuz before he had forty, right, it's like forty, oh, fuck, forty, like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
And he's not supposed to cover that bluff.
He is not, yeah, it's a bit too wide, so maybe he, he, he bit the. He, uh, overdid it on this one, maybe. Yeah, he overdid it on this.
Yeah, he has, he has thirty. For bad, he has.
Nah, he has, he's, uh, started with like twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Yeah, he overdid it a little bit.
He overdid it a little bit, yeah.
Seven on the river to my boom.
Haha, I mean, yeah, I was just hoping for no ace, it's up with gold rush.
The only card more insulting than a seven on the river to him is a four.
A four, yeah, I just give him the, the pair.
What did you hear? Too deep to treat that, no?
No, I'm not gonna treat that this one, because it's forty big, so, like, if we treat that and get it in forty deep. With four, we, we should, we should lose the, we should get second place.
Yeah, oh, you float one here.
I float one, because we have a pair, you know, we have a pair. Uh, like, just giving up, like, although we, we called, we only called pre, but like, I'm not gonna be so scared on the flop, like, it's heads up. We have the, also the, um, we, we don't have the backdoors, so we just, we just have, we can hit a four on the turn, we have the backdoor set. We have the backdoor set, so we can, you know, just call one, half pot.
Give the backdoor quad, we have direct outs to us.
Exactly, backdoor boat, backdoor quads, et cetera. Now we fold, because what do we beat at this point? Nothing, nothing much, queen high? Hmm, I don't think, I don't think we wanna, so in this game, uh, in the replay, he had, what do he have? He had, he had ace, some, some strong hand. But we were beat, we were beat. Uh, yeah, raise, call, take it down, I really take it down. Well, this guy was like folding all sorts, all sorts of like strong hands to me. He was folding five, four.
You get to see his hands?
Uh, we have the replay, we have the replay, actually.
Oh, it was, oh, this was T V, okay, it's streamed.
Uh, not, not really streamed, it was, um, uh, on A C R, there is the, uh, final table replayer. So you can watch the final table, yeah, you can watch the final table back after you.
Oh, wow, that's good.
So I recorded it and sent it to the group, but I found that he was folding like all sorts of stuff to me. Like, this, this five, four off, this, I raise, he folds, oh my god. No one, like, yeah, so. Okay, this one, call, oh, this is my favorite, one of my favorite hands, yeah, of the match. Like, he goes very big, right? We have queen deuce off, and we raise. So maybe we should take a look at this one in the, because this is probably the last relevant hand, can take a look at it in G T O wizard.
Free flop?
No, 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 on the, on the flop, I mean.
Chippy V?
Yeah, yeah, chippy, yeah, it's heads up, there's, I see him, so I see him. Yeah.
My prediction is gonna be.
We're playing for all the marbles, basically.
My prediction is gonna be the queen deuce does a lot of check rate here, but not against that size.
Let's go.
Running at the hamburger here.
Let's go. Because this is our best, our best raise, uh, candidate in the whole game, I think, because we unblock all the pairs. Right? We have the queen, but we unblock every single pair that bet folds. Uh, but you're right, because the size is weird, because he's not really supposed to bet, uh, like. Like his pocket fives, I think that size, maybe he does, I don't know, I don't know shit about.
Yes, look at this.
Yeah. Cool. So he bets big. He bets like really big, right, and then we just give him the business with the queen deuce, look at that queen deuce off.
It's there.
Look at that beautiful, beautiful raise, oh, man. It's giving me chills, look at this, it's so, so sexy.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Hmm. And the deuces, that you were right about the pair thing, deuce is more, is more than fours.
Yeah, yeah, beautiful, beautiful, that's my, that's my favorite hand of the whole match. But, okay, so this one, uh, no idea what to bet on this, you know, it's hits up, I don't know anything about hits up, but it's bet, check it down, he's six, seven, okay. One three to value, that's fine. Uh, just iso raise, uh, that's small, he folds, it's just very standard ace high board. Makes it four point seven, we fold it to him. Makes it four point seven, we folded, we limped it, yeah, yeah, no, no, you can have it, bro, you can have it, yeah. Uh, yeah, I think this, so we check it down, you know, I just don't wanna blow the pot against him for no reason, we have like a six to one chip lead, uh, five to one. Just play very solid, uh, there's some, some back doors, we get it off, it's up, ace, king, easy. Just trying to like lock it down, I don't wanna punt, you know, you know, we check it back, you know, one, we were rip boat, he calls. Oh, king high, you got lucky.
High.
Yeah.
Max value.
Max value, yeah, we bluff the turn, yeah, and then we get that in the river.
And then the.
All in, all in. End it, baby. Time to become long car champions, let's go, ace ten.
Oh, you had a massive sweat, look at this, how did you survive that?
We have the ace of diamonds, oh.
Oh, seriously? Damn, I didn't know, I was just like hoping to.
No sweat?
There was a, there was a.
It's twelve bouts.
Let's go, in like six in the morning, nine in the morning, I don't know, some weird, there we go.
Yeah.
Michael Longcar will be proud.
Yeah, that my friend is how you shit the long car for ten thousand dollars. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, thank you, that was a fun one.
Yeah, well played, oh, I, I think you're, uh, doing a little bit of coaching now, are you now?
Yeah, 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 so I'm offering a bit of coaching, um, like, I don't even, yeah, uh, taken quite a few students recently, so I'm not sure.
So just tell us, how much is it? Where people can reach you, just quickly?
Um, so, I'll post it, so I, how to reach me, okay, basically just DM me on Discord, I'm, uh, Nokia, N-O-C-R-I-A.
Mind if I show your profile?
Yeah, sure, 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 yeah, you can just DM me, add me as a friend, and if you're in the, the Discord or anything, like, uh, we share a similar Discord, then I'll just accept it usually. Uh, yeah, this one, so just add me, uh, it's like eighty-five dollars for two hours. Um, yeah, it's eighty-five dollars, two hours, fifty dollars an hour for coaching, so we do like hand reviews. Um, I'll, I'll teach you all the PKO secrets and stuff, you know, if you're a PKO player, probably it's good. Although this one wasn't PKO, so maybe my vanilla got a bit better, so, so, yeah, we'll have fun, you know, it's not, uh, yeah, couldn't just like, uh, get through the sticks together.
All right, thanks a lot, my friend, it was a pleasure to have you, thanks for your time, and see you guys around.